All rise. For yeses, yeses, County Commission Meeting in Sumter County is now open. Pursue it through adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Sheriff Weatherford. Our pastor tonight that's going to give us our invocation is Pastor Ken Shaw. He's from Trinity Lutheran Church on 720 Lockwood Road, Yount, Tennessee. Pastor Shaw has served as a pastor of Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church in Galton since 2005. Previously served as the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod as an evangelistic missionary, theological educator, and pastoral counselor to the Lutheran Church of Guatemala. He received his Bachelor of Arts degree in management and communications from Concordia University in Wisconsin. He received his Master of Divinity degree from Concordia Theological Seminary in Fort Wayne, Indiana. Pastor Shaw and his wife Stacy have two daughters, Melissa and Christina. Pastor, thank you so much for being with us tonight and delivering our invocation.
Let us pray. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty God, Creator of heaven and earth, you have given us this good and bountiful nation. Grant that we remember your generosity and constantly act according to your holy and divine will. Bless our communities with honest industry, truthful education, and an honorable way of life. Keep us from violence, discord, and division, from pride and arrogance, and from every form of evil. Bless the families of our communities. Protect and guide them. Enable them to be able to provide for both spiritual and physical needs of their families. Watch over and guard all who serve our communities: policemen, firemen, emergency, and utility workers, and those who serve in our military. God bless, protect them, and watch over their families. You have given authority to the nations of the world to punish evildoers, but also for the praise and benefit of those who live peaceably. We especially pray this evening that you would graciously guide those who have been elected to positions of authority and service among us, that they may be directed to act according to your holy will. Give each of them wisdom necessary to faithfully perform their duties. But we also ask that you guide them in the work that is brought before them this evening, so that they may serve their constituents faithfully and fairly. Guard the lips of all who will speak this evening, so that what is said may indeed be spoken with love and concern for others in mind, keeping all anger, hatred, and discord far from this gathering. Move each of your servants to defend the freedom and liberties of all citizens. Receive our prayers this evening, which we offer to you in the name of your beloved son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you in the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
You're joined by... I'm glad to lead this beautiful life in the United States of America, and here we are, for which it stands, one nation under God, the individual is never being unjustified.
Commissioners, roll calls open. Please record your presence. I have. Mr. Chairman, we have 21 commissioners present. We have... Okay. Mr. Palmer, we'll be a little bit late. He said he'd be around here around 7:15. Mr. Dropper is in, I believe, Guatemala on mission trip right now, so he couldn't make it tonight. And Mr. Graves, I should have mentioned this before prayer, but we want to keep Commissioner Graves in our prayers. He had triple bypass surgery about 10 days ago, so he's done real well. I thought he might be able to make it today, but couldn't make it today, so let's keep Commissioner Graves in our prayers, since he's recovered from the surgery. Commissioner Taylor?
It's only when you want to get approved.
Okay. All right. Do you have your agenda before you? I'll wait for a motion. Motion made by Mr. Good, seconded by Mr. Ring. Commissioner Taylor?
Under budget.
Yes, sir.
Could we move 1606-06 after the Finance Department's memo?
Is that a motion, Mr. ... I saw one. So, second?
Second.
Second, may it be on Mr. Vaughn to move 1606-06 up to the top Budget Committee spot right after the Finance Department memo? Any more discussion? Mr. Ring?
Yes, sir. I was just curious as to find out the reason why you would do this.
After that anyway is several...
Several.
Commissioner, if you want to go first.
I can. I didn't want to get into the setting of the tax rate. You know, I probably don't get a lot of recognition, because I didn't want to hear what I had to say. We fund this body at a tax rate that was under cap, and I was going to propose a different measure of funds than requested items, rather than the litigation taxes and fees. That's why you divvy out the pennies out of your tax rate. You can move pennies within your tax rate from one place to the other. So, that's how all of these budgets are funded, is by the pennies. We got 250 of them. We can move these from one department to the other, and that's how we fund them. We've done it in the past. That's how we can do it, and I just figured it was more appropriate to set the pennies in the right spot, rather than to make a motion on the floor during the discussion that the pennies don't go along. So, that's my reason.
Thank you, Commissioner Good, for the explanation. Mr. Good?
Mr. Chairman, I want to note that in the frustration I just offered today is, we've spent four months, maybe five, in budget hearings, in budget meetings. Budgets have been successful to everyone for about, it's terrific, what may be, for weeks. Again, we have our leaders. The person making the vote was not a budget before Commissioner too, and that disavowation never came up, because our respect would be on me, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Good. Now, let's put this on the board and we'll vote on it.
We're voting on the amendment to the agenda to move the higher budget up to the top after the report. That amendment is on the board, so...
I'm sorry, let me be clear. A yes vote is to move it up on the agenda, a no vote is to leave it where it is. 1606-06, it's the tax rate.
So, we are ready to vote on the amendment. The amendment is on the board. Express your vote. Record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? The amendment receiving six hundred votes fails here.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor to set our agenda for the evening. It's going to be made and powerfully seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait on the motion on the minutes. Motion made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Commissioner Chris Taylor. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Without any objection, we're going to move through our certificates of recognition first, and then that way we'll be able to come back and pick up our recognition of the public after that, without any objection. Mr. Foster, still, do you want to present your motion for your resolution? You're a person, and then I already want to wait since he's not here.
Well, we need to...
We got to prove it.
Well, yeah, I would like to present this. I don't need to read it necessarily, but...
Okay.
This is a resolution honoring Master Chief Paul Corey. He just retired last month after 30 years of service in the United States Navy, United States Army.
Motion has been made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, Mr. Mo Taylor. All in favor, say aye. And we honor him for many, many years of service to his country. He's a fantastic man, a great recruiter, a great part of our community, and White House, and it's great to honor him. Thank you, Mr. Foster.
I'd like to invite Adam Neely and his family up here. I will read this resolution honoring Adam Neely. Whereas Adam Neely, a 2016 Galton High School graduate, recently became the first member of the 100-plus-year history of Galton High School to win state titles in both the shot put and discus, and was named the 2016 Sumter County Track Athlete of the Year by the Sumter County Gazette Newspapers. And whereas Adam had his best discus throw of the season at 181 feet and 5 inches, which earned him the 2016 TWSAA State Champion title in discus, and was named the 2016 TWSAA State Champion in shot put with a throw of 59 feet and 11 inches. And whereas, in addition to being an extraordinary track and field athlete with limitless potential, Adam was an outstanding student who ranked third in his class and graduated with a 4.0 grade point average, and is a University of Memphis signee, winning both academic and athletic scholarships. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumter County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this the 20th day of June 2016, that this body does hereby congratulate Adam Neely for his outstanding achievements, and wishes him future success. And be it resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Adam Neely. So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ring, seconded by Mr. Becker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And Noah Butler and his family would come up, please.
A resolution honoring Noah Butler. Whereas Noah Butler, through his commitment to academic excellence, graduated in the top 5% of the 2016 graduating class at Galton High School, receiving the social studies and science awards. And whereas Noah, a member of the Galton High School academic team for four years, became only the second student and the first since 2008 to be selected to the All-American Academic Team, one of only five players to receive this award, and as a captain of the team, led his school to the first varsity tournament victory at the WCTE-TV Upper Cumberland Region Meet, where he was the top scorer. And whereas during his remarkable high school career, Noah participated in numerous extracurricular activities, including mock trial, youth in government, Tennessee State History B, where he was a finalist, and served as an unpaid intern in the office of Congressman Diana Black. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Sumter County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this the 20th day of June 2016, that this body hereby congratulates and commends Noah Butler for his outstanding accomplishments, and wishes him a happy, successful future. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Noah Butler. So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ring, seconded by Mr. Becker. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Would Mr. Lance Taylor and Kim Harbreeder, Anna Connor, and Noah D. Allen come forward, please? Lance Taylor has been selected as, I'll read the resolutions in just a moment, as Principal of the Year for Sumter County. Kim Harbreeder is elementary, Anna O'Connor is middle, and Melody Allen is High School Teacher of the Year. And the resolution is, Sumter County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this the 20th day of June 2016, does hereby honor and commend each of them for achieving the honor of either Principal of the Year or Teacher of the Year. So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Ring, seconded by Commissioner Kruger. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And would the valedictorians and their families come forward, please? Every year since I've been on County Commission, I've felt like it was important to honor the valedictorians of Sumter County. We honor athletic scholar, athletic achievers and things like that, which is all well and good, and I appreciate that, but I think it's important to also honor those who are academic achievers in Sumter County. I will read the resolution for all of them, and we'll vote on that, and then we'll pass them out. The Sumter County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this the 20th day of June 2016, does hereby honor and commend all the valedictorians of the 2016 graduating class. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Ring, seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Mary Rose Thompson. Allison Farrell. You're here. Jacob Kukel.
Congratulations.
There's several from Westmoreland High School. Okay. White House, Laura Andrews. Not here. And let's see. I'll just let you all sort out the ones from Portland High School here, or Westmoreland. Haley Bradwell. Destiny Harrison. Philip Hill. And Morgan Madison. Okay. I'll let you all sort those out. I'm not sure which, who's the... And then Portland High School, we have Holly Keppley, Kimber Morris, Hogan Sherrill. Okay. Holly. You are Kimber. And you are Hogan. And you have one, anybody who's not here? Anybody got an extra one? Okay. Those who are not here, they'll be sent down. Congratulations.
We will now move back to our veteran service report. It's available on your table. One more announcement, there will be a Westmoreland Freedom Festival Saturday night from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. Commissioner, where is that?
Downtown Westmoreland.
Downtown Westmoreland. You get there between 3:00 and 10:00, you'll be able to find the Freedom Festival. So, Westmoreland Freedom Festival Saturday night. Your veteran service report is on your desk, and we'll now move with Mr. Charles Curtis, the Executive Director of the Tennessee County Commission Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, elected officials, county executive, Hope. It's certainly an honor to be here tonight, citizens. I'm the Executive Director of the County Commissioners Association. I actually work for you. I'm your only employee in Nashville, so if something goes south, I really can't pass the buck. It's me that has dropped the ball if something really terrible happens to County Commissioners. I started my political career in '78. I was selling some of the fire chiefs back here. I was elected Fire Chief in White County in '78, one of the rural fire departments. Never had any intention of ever getting involved in politics, but after coming to County Commission meetings, in '82, I ran for the County Commission, was elected as a County Commissioner. My whole goal was to get on the County Commission and help funding for fire departments. I felt I understood the need, and I wanted to get there, and I resigned as Fire Chief and got elected. Once I got elected, I found out that wasn't the most important thing we did. Fire service is one of the most important things in this county. These children, young adults, who are up there receiving their award, that's the most important thing to do in this county, is save their children and get a good education. But in '86, I was elected County Executive. Got a T-shirt, done that. Then in '94, I ran for the Tennessee General Assembly, and God bless me, I was elected for 10 terms in the Tennessee General Assembly. January 1 of '14, I left the General Assembly and became the Executive Director of County Commissioners Association. The main reason I visit these counties, it has never been done before, and I wanted to visit all 95 counties at the commission order, at the committee meetings, and the real reason I want to come and talk to you is I want you to understand I'm not a dignitary stuck off in a building in Nashville. I'm just a dull country boy. I still live on the same farm I was raised on. If I can help you, I will. I promise you, I do not know all the answers, but I do know where to dig. If I can help you in any way, don't hesitate to call me. I took the liberty of putting my business card at each one of your work sessions. That's got every phone number I got. It's got my home phone, my cell phone, and my work phone. If you wake up at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning and you feel you got to call me, call. You're not going to make me mad, but my wife rather won't talk to me for 30 days. But if you need me, call. The last two years, we had almost 8,000 pieces of legislation that came through the General Assembly. This particular year, we had 3,864 pieces of legislation come through. That's county resolutions and everything. There wasn't that many bills that positively or negatively affected County Commissioners, but that's where I come in to play. We're governed by a Board of County Commissioners, and they've got a committee. Anyone that's a County Commissioner is eligible to serve on that committee. They reviewed the bills, they voted, and decided what I would fight for and what I would oppose. And so, I'm challenging each one of you. I know everybody's busy, but come February, early, late January, early February, we'll be deciding what bills we're going to support and what we're going to oppose. You can choose to sit on the side of that and hope to God somebody does a good job, or you can sign up and come and debate and vote and be part of the solution. Be part of the team that comes up with the solution rather than sit back, but that's your call. C-Tex is changing its training around a little bit. It's hard to take off work and travel a great distance. It's not a great distance here to Nashville. Sometimes I may meet in Knoxville, or Micas, or Jackson, or Coogaloo. But they're starting to do training on webinars. That means it will be archived on their portal. You can get on any time of day you want to. If you want to look up county budget, the budget process, it would be broken down into sections. You can look at it any time you want to, as many times as you want to. So, that's something we're evolving into. Our fall conference is coming up in October, and we will be meeting at Opryland this year. About that, you'll all be receiving notice of that. Our regional meeting, the closest regional meeting we've got to you, will be in Robertson County in early September at Catfish House. That's where we generally have that meeting. Invite all of you to attend that if you've got the opportunity to. I want to share one thing with you. I've got two rules I live by. I'm getting old. I don't always feel old, but some days I feel old. Lord, as we live, on my next birthday, I'll be 70. But I've learned a few things. One thing that really happened, several years ago, I read just a small magazine article, and in it it had one sample paragraph that said, "Speak well of your enemies." You may... That's humorous on the front end, but it's really profound if you really think about it. If somebody really has a problem with you, hates you, despises you, you may not cause it, but you had something to do with it. You could have said a kind word when you didn't, or you could have walked off when you didn't. But since I read that, really come to grasp with it, I deal with my fellow man a lot different than I did before that. I'm an old Marine, and they didn't train us to negotiate much. But I learned, after reading that article, it's much better if you disagree with someone to leave that to where you can be friends later on and agree on the next issue. Don't go to battle over otherwise. The second rule I live by, I was blessed, I was in the construction industry for years, done some work in this county. If you have to twist or turn the truth, or do anything underhanded to get what you want, God's not in it. If God's not in it, you don't want it. You may be happy for a short period of time, but you ain't going to be happy long. Trust me, what I just told you is a fact. I want to thank each one of you for what you do. County government is the foundation on which this state is sitting on. There's no place in this state that is clearly defined, the executive branch, the legislative branch, and the judicial branch, and it is the county government. You're the legislative branch. I want to thank each one of you for the job you do. I know you take time away from your families. I hope and pray God bless us, each one of you and your family. I hope and pray you have a good evening. I'm only going to try to make roll call before my daughter turns the lights out. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I want to say that most of us, I know Anthony and Lady Ellof, Steel Car, Charles, Representative, a few people, but he is, the years I worked in the corporate office, he is the man of the other company. Everything he says is stayed on, and for those that work on the hill when they're in session, he's down there every day, and he's... You've got a county issue, you've got to keep a cellphone calling. We appreciate you coming up there. Go say thank you, and we'll go over any rest of the questions.
You know, when I volunteered to do this, to visit all 95 counties, I said, "I'll do it." In my mind, I think this will just take a year. There's 42 of you that made on the 3rd Monday night, and I'm not a sharpness after the door, but I guess you figured out there's only 12 3rd Mondays a year. So, I'm working on it.
Mr. Charlie, I just want to thank you for coming tonight and by our County Commission for all meaning. I can't tell you how important it's been for me to be involved in the County Mayor Association meeting, and what I've learned, how effective it makes me, and I'm hoping that our Commissioners will show up, because I don't think we stress how important it is to interact, network with other Commissioners across our state. A lot of the same problems that we face, they've been addressed in some way, and that gives you a great background to know how to tackle those issues. And I want to thank you again for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Hope, and thank you, Mr. Curtis. Very much. We're going to move back to recognition of the public in just a second. I did want to recognize one more group that's with us tonight. If you look in the very back of the room, you will see a group of Boy Scouts, fellows at Galton, stand up. They are... They are in the process of completing a badge, and they are here to watch how government works. Gentlemen, when I entered into the state legislature one time when I was a college student, in our first meeting, they told us, they said, "You know, watching legislation be made is a little bit like watching sausage be made. There's a lot that goes into it, but the final product is good." So, hopefully you'll learn something tonight about the way government runs in Sumter County. And all kidding aside, all jokes aside, the one thing that I hope you can get from tonight is the fact that many, many, many of the things that affect our daily lives are decided here at the county level, not at the state or federal level, like everyone likes to think, but we make a lot of decisions that affect the roads, and the schools, and police, and fire, and everything else, and you'll get to see a lot of people with different opinions, but I think one of the positive things is to see how our system in the United States works, where we deal with each other civilly, we stop to listen to each other, and then we vote, and we live with the outcomes of what our elections give us. So, welcome to the County Commission tonight. We applaud you for your willingness to come and for the badges that you're presenting. We applaud you for your willingness to come and for the badges that you're presenting. Thank you. We have five people signed up for recognition of the public tonight. Is there anyone who has not signed up and wishes to? Again, let me just run through just a couple of reminders, not just for the public, but for all of us. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I would like to speak to someone else. May I speak to someone else?
My hearing is bad. I'll have to get you to come up and sign. I apologize. One is being is that in this forum, we ask that any comments during public comments or during our commission conversations be directed towards the chair. We will follow a normal procedure. We ask that as a practice of good decorum, that we don't insult or make derogatory comments towards any public institution, any public figures, or any other citizens. We ask that comments be directed towards an item specifically on the agenda for this evening. That said, Mr. Joe McLaughlin from twenty-two thirty-eight Highway twenty-five, Cotton Town, Tennessee, is gonna come forward to address this. And you will have, each speaker will have five minutes, and our county clerk will give you a one-minute warning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Joe McLaughlin. I'm the fire chief of the Cotton Town Fire Department. I've been the chief there since nineteen ninety-nine when we opened the station. I'd like to talk briefly about the volunteer fire department budget tonight. In 2013, Cotton Town decided we were at the point where we needed and could afford to operate our own tanker. We cover about ninety square miles with only thirty-six fire hydrants, so water supply is a critical issue with us. In order to add a tanker, we had to add on, add an additional bay onto our station. We were outgrowing the building, so this would also give us the opportunity to add additional office and storage space. We asked the emergency services committee and budget committee for money to help offset some of the cost, but were turned down. We had enough money to go, to get the addition framed and closed in, so we decided to continue with the addition and apply for FEMA grants for the tanker. We could finish the addition on our own money, on our own, as money was available. We were unsuccessful two years in a row in getting a grant for a tanker. We found and purchased a used tanker, which has been in service a year now. Will continue to apply for grants to replace it. Two weeks ago, we finished the addition with a new HVAC system for the entire building. We didn't build the addition, buy a truck, and then come to the county because we couldn't pay for it. We paid for the entire project ourselves, and in doing so, improved the fire protection for in excess of twelve hundred homeowners in our fire district. Going into the project, we knew our operating expenses would go up, but we could absorb the cost. We plan and operate within our meanings. We knew we would not get an increase in our fourteen-thousand-dollar annual county donation because this is based on the number of stations the department operates. We didn't add a station, but we improved fire protection and safety for twelve hundred homeowners. What we didn't know was we would lose a thousand dollars so another fire department could pay for a new station to improve fire protection for nine hundred residents, or nine hundred homeowners. A thousand dollars in our operating environment is significant. Are additional fire stations needed in unincorporated areas of the county? Absolutely. In my estimation, there needs to be at least twice as many. There are existing stations that need to be replaced or upgraded. Some need to be moved because of their poor location in relation to the area they serve. Sumner County needs to move into the twenty-first century for providing fire protection to the unincorporated areas of the county. These residents expect this service. I hope the full county commission can rectify the way volunteer fire department budgets are handled in the future. This issue has been going on way too long. I have been coming up here, not all the time, but since nineteen ninety-nine. I see the same fire department officials. Doesn't matter if it's from Cotton Town, White House community volunteer, number one, Shacklawn, Gallatin, it's always the same fire officials coming up. It's you guys that keep changing, and it's a continuing struggle for us. Any help that you can provide in getting things rectified would be greatly appreciated. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to talk to them.
So, this is a conference, we're not really, we can't really take questions.
It's not me right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. Mr. Greg Spurlock from one oh two Citation Court, I think, Hendersonville, Tennessee. Mr. Jason Erleone will be up next.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name's Greg Spurlock. I'm deputy chief of the number-one fire department, and I've been a firefighter and paramedic for over thirty-five years, donating my time and giving back to my community. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the lack of attention to a critical element of life safety in our community, and that's fire service. Somehow through the years, this county has taken a very different approach than other surrounding communities in middle Tennessee in regards to fire service. Each of you have made a conscious decision, or your predecessor, that life safety is not a responsibility of this county commission. Somehow you've decided that having a sheriff's department is essential, having EMS is essential, but fire service is not. That's kinda unbelievable. I travel around the country, teaching for the government, and I don't find anybody else that takes that approach. Each of the counties, each of the cities within our county have found it essential and spend millions of dollars a year providing that service. And the surrounding counties have done the same, through fire taxes, through funding, through different methodologies, but they've found ways to do it. Our all-volunteer fire department is like the other departments within the county and have been providing free service to the citizens of this county for over thirty-five years. Just last year, our number-one fire department's ISO rating was reduced to four, same as the cities of Hendersonville and Gallatin. One of the big reasons for this reduction is thousands of hours of training we spend each year. This has a direct impact in this rating to the citizens and their homeowners' insurance, as most of you know. Our department's the only advanced life support-capable fire truck in the county. In an effort to provide the best possible service to our neighbors, we've put funds towards that service. But this doesn't come for free. We divert training hours to fundraising, and with all our fundraising efforts and the small contribution from this county, we get to about fifty thousand dollars each year. Our station has no indoor plumbing. We have no toilet facilities. We have no showers. We only have a single cold water hose. We have loans on our fire trucks that are upside down to the value of the fire trucks, as do most of the departments in this county. Our insurance payments run about ten thousand dollars a year. Loan payments, because they're stretched out on fire trucks to help with budget, run about ten thousand dollars a year. So, that leaves about thirty thousand dollars to fully operate a twenty-four-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week fire service. That's physically not possible. A new set of gear for our firefighters is about three thousand dollars. A new air pack is about six thousand dollars. This equipment needs to be replaced at least every ten years. And if you haven't noticed, the cities of Hendersonville and Gallatin are spending about five hundred thousand dollars each for each new fire truck they buy. I've personally written a multitude of grants from our local, state, and federal sources over the last fifteen years. We've gotten a few of them, but have been turned down for the majority. So, we're seeking funding from anywhere we can get it. Without these kinds of grants, there are no capital dollars. So, my point to this commission is you cannot turn a blind eye to the fact that life safety is an essential service of any local government, and that police, fire, and EMS are the components of life safety. Each of you are not doing your fiduciary responsibility as commissioners by not taking the steps necessary to protect the citizens that elected you. As a first step, there needs to be a major increase in fire service funding to get some new fire trucks in this county. Maybe on a rotational basis, maybe on some other methodology, but there needs to be significant funding. Second step would be, I would urge you to charge the public safety committee for options to improve the equipment and training countywide, so when the responders arrive, they have the correct training and equipment to protect themselves so they can serve the citizens of our community. We're not asking for any stacking dollars, if you haven't noticed that, because you have volunteers across this county that give of their time. Thank you. Free, which provide millions of dollars each service, but we're asking for monies to properly fund stations and equipment. The real issue is much deeper than the thousand dollars that was reallocated. So, there's just millions of dollars that volunteers provide, and you guys need to support them. So, thanks for your attention, this is a very important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Spurlock. Mr. Erleone from one oh five Lori Lee Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Mr. Kevin Baker is on that.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Commissioners, how is everybody this evening? You know, I signed up, and it's hard to follow my colleague Greg. I am Jason Erleone. I'm also deputy chief of the number-one volunteer fire department, and been there a little over twenty-three years now. And I seem to remember coming in front of you guys many times, asking for money. And again, I'm asking you reconsider the budget that has come in front as far as the money allocation towards volunteer departments. You know, I realize that it took a thousand dollars away from several of the departments to help fund another. But the issue is that not just a thousand dollars, it's the principle of such, because I'm the guy that has to do most of the training in this county. And I say that respectfully, but I sat there and was using my phone, and I figured, oh, I've spent a little over a thousand hours of my own time putting things together for this county. And I say county as in countywide, everybody in every one of your districts, as far as the fire service and/or emergency service, I have touched. I've trained people in every city. I have trained people in every county department, including EMS and in the sheriff's department. So, I have personally taken care of each one of those, and our department outreach is to each one to try and bring the county's level of training up to be able to support all the missions that we have going, because we're one family and we work well together. So, as you're considering all of the budgetary items tonight, emergency service is very close to my heart, as it is for some of you who are already there. I've worked in the sheriff's department as an auxiliary deputy. I've worked in EMS as a paramedic. I've also volunteered, and I think that's very important for our community, is to make sure that we want up the level of funding. Don't decrease what we have, and we need to move forward. And I know you said no questions, but I will offer that any comments you need anything, my contact information is available. I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Erleone. Mr. Kevin Baker, excuse me, from four twenty-four AD Way Road in Portland.
Next time I should put on some gold bling, and I feel a little naked up here compared to what you guys... Thank you, first of all, for your service. I know what it's like to have been a volunteer for thirty-five years myself up in Connecticut. In any event, I'd like to speak tonight about the budgets. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and county commissioners. The work you do tonight continues to set the direction of and the financial stability for our county for many years to come. And by the way, it also helps to cement your legacies. I truly hope that each of you has fully digested the proposed county and school budgets, and don't vote along previously established ideological lines, but vote for what is truly best for the entire citizenry of our county. And thank you specifically to the members of the budget committee. Laura and I sat through most of the working sessions. Your efforts are noteworthy. Although I can't speak to the level of critical thinking, I can comment on the level or the lack of critical question, and to that I'll speak. But in the interest of keeping this brief, and so certain pundits can quickly debunk my statements, let me remind you that my audio recordings of those sessions don't lie. So, let me make these points. The proposed two thousand sixteen-seventeen operating non-capital budget for the schools jumped by three point four percent, yet the budgeted school enrollment went up by point six nine percent. So, we're spending more money for only a little bit more kids. Year over year, the rate of student enrollment, the growth of that, has slowed also. In two thousand fifteen-sixteen, we had three hundred, per Dr. Phillips's records, three hundred new students versus a projected number of two hundred for two thousand sixteen-seventeen. So, I'm not buying the growth thing that I keep being told. Equally, state contribution to our schools increased by three point nine million dollars in two thousand fifteen and by nine point three million dollars in two thousand sixteen. However quickly, all of this money was immediately spent. The point being is, that money's not guaranteed year over year. However, due to the maintenance of effort requirement, the nuisance around the necks of the Sumner County citizens is guaranteed. So, we're gonna be facing this issue. Historically, economic cycles go in eight-to-ten-year cycles. Anybody familiar with the term schmida? Well, we're in a schmida year. And so, that's eight years. So, we're very likely on the verge of a downturn, yet we continue to spend over our revenues. Additionally, in March, a backdoor attempt to commandeer the property assessments was thwarted by the voters. The next property assessments aren't due for a couple of years. So, any thoughts of hiding our spending addition where the property value increase can't happen? So, finally gets me to the whole point of this thing and growth. In a June two thousand sixteen real estate magazine published by The Tennessean, over the last five to six years, during a period of unprecedented growth in Tennessee, the population growth in Sumner County lagged well behind the bellwether counties that we like to emulate, Rutherford, Williamson, and Wilson. But that's a good thing, because if you look at where Williamson County is right now, they're nine hundred million dollars in debt. Is that what we want to emulate? Each and every one of you knows that every student-age school child that moves into this county has several thousand dollars' worth of tax burden that must be absorbed by the existing residents. Is that what you want? Do you want to spend tax dollars to fund supposed growth engines when they don't provide monthly reports as requested or tangible returns on investment and inevitably further burden the citizens? If any of you went to the doctor and he told you you had a growth, you'd probably immediately say, "Cut it out." Well, that's what I'm asking. Can we cut it out, not vote on these increased burdens to the taxpayers, send the school budget back to be whittled down, and send the county budget back to the budget committee to remove taxpayer funding of growth anchors like Ford and Sumner? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Ms. Laura Baker, also from four twenty-four AV Way Road in Portland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments also on the budget. As Kevin mentioned, for the second year, we sat through the majority of the working sessions of the budget committee. It's a long and challenging task. Thank you to the budget committee, all the other commissioners who came through some of the sessions, and the departments who came with their presentations, and a special shout-out to the finance department who's not even in the room for a job well done. We appreciate those of you actually listening to us and considering what we're saying as citizens of Sumner County. For those who think we're wasting your time, that's the root of what's wrong with all government at all levels. Just have two quick points. First, very openly in the media, citizens were told, "No one with any credibility is talking about a tax increase." And yet, in your packet is a resolution sixteen oh six oh two for an additional fifty-dollar litigation tax. Also in your packet is resolution sixteen oh six oh three to increase ambulance transport rates by fifty dollars. We fully support pay increases for all county general employees, and we wish that increases could have been more. And there probably should be more instances of fees for services. But these resolutions fly in the face of the commitment by this commission to be the most transparent by contradicting the very recent statements. Add that to the transportation resolution you just passed, not so good. Second, the state often complains... Second, the state often complains about unfunded mandates from the federal government. Members of this body, and administration, and the school board often point out the unfunded mandates from state and federal government. But you know what? You're creating the county's version of unfunded mandates. I know, that probably sounds crazy, but when you have budgets that exceed our revenues at the county general and school levels, combined with maintenance of effort, that's an unfunded mandate. Since you aren't going to be able to do much about the maintenance of effort mandate part of it, the only part that you'll be able to do is the funding part, meaning you will be left with no choice but to increase taxes like you're doing with the two resolutions before you tonight. Like you're trying to do with a lot of other things, thinking ahead, you might want to do that about the $9 million of state funding going to the schools, in case it's not renewed next year. It's not going to be so easy to get that kind of money by slipping in some newer increased fees. The Budget Committee did what they thought they had to do, saying no to fully funding the life and death services of the volunteer fire departments, EMS, and Sheriff's Department. Again, we know it's not an easy job, we sat through it, so we know what you're up against. But, what will it take to say no to the school director or the school board increases? Thank you, and may God guide you tonight in your deliberations and decisions.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Matthew Marvin Wilson. He is from 1413 Rivermont, Southern Fork, in Gallatin. So you've got five minutes, we won't start your time until you get up here and get ready. I appreciate it.
I'd first like to start off by saying, thank you very much, Mr. Commissioner, for allowing us to speak here. I do live in the county, and resident of the county. I'm here tonight for two different reasons, that believe strongly in it. First, regarding Sumner County EMS and their pay raise. These people are men and women who wake up every day and leave their families for twenty-four hours to come and protect our families. And to me, that's moving. These heroes deal with all situations, from trauma patients to people who fell, and give the utmost professionalism to each person. Running emergency traffic through rush hour traffic, to dealing with people who are having their worst days, they always are there for us, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I call these people heroes, because no matter what happens, they're there, and they're there to help. These heroes deserve a raise, and have earned it. And I believe that, no matter what, they receive the respect from me, and I really hope that my county, the money that I pay towards my county taxes, on both of my residents here, go towards giving them a raise. They really do deserve it. The second issue that I'm here to talk about is funding for our volunteer fire departments, who are also heroes. I support them, and would like more of my funds also, to go to these hard-working men and women who volunteer their time, energy, effort, money, to make sure that we are all safe in the county. It's an important thing, that we need fire departments that respond with EMS, Sumner County Sheriff's, and make sure that they're there, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, without pay. They are heroes, and they have earned the right to receive more funding, not less. So I urge the Commissioners to please listen to these volunteer fire department professionals, and please give them more funding. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. I will declare public comments over at this time, and we will move on to our approval of our consent agenda items, 1606-CON. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda items? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Crutcher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Your county officials' reports are on your desk. Let's look at our number use report, is there a motion to approve our number use report? Motion made by Mr. Pomeroi, seconded by Commissioner Bill Taylor, is on board.
Number application on the board, Commissioner Lee, support your vote. Eighteen votes are entered. Twenty-one votes are entered, anyone not voting, or anyone wish to change their vote? With twenty-two apartment votes, numbers are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll now go to our standing committees, Mr. Goode, committee alchemists.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
You're on.
Thank you, Chairman. Meeting ended tonight, it's regular scheduled time, not the time. We had one item of official business, as you can see from your agenda, ten more times, October 2017 application, six-year term, county executive level regulation, salad and iron, that was passed, and that was unanimous, in committee, and I salute it.
Motion made, motion good, seconded by Mr. Ring. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next month, the, for today's business, was referred back to July, as an FYI. I will go through the list of next month, as you can see, the library, library regional, airport regional, and we also added tourism board, that would be July. And one announcement, Mr. Chairman. Everybody has this list on their desk, make sure you got it. It's that time of year again, where we put down our requests for committee. Please note on here, that this is due back to Mr. Kemp's office, or Chairman Lamar, which is going to help facilitate this end this year, by July 12th. So we'll note that the other commissioners are not here, but everybody here is, it's not in by July 12th. Actually, everybody knows, we've done a willing search for years, getting everyone's first offer, in most cases, second choice, first choice, second choice. So please make sure you get in by July 12th, the goal will be to start, go through those and the official committee, committee begins in July, and Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Ms. Lamar, application.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Commissioner Taylor.
On that form, it says budget will be five, Commissioner Miller, should that be seven?
Mr. Goode, should that be seven on budget, on the form, it says five?
It should be.
Should be seven, Commissioner Taylor.
It's not my table, I don't have a minute, or everybody just can leave right now? Let's save the truth.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Ms. Lamar, application.
Yes, our meeting, our June meeting was actually held on May the 26th, as a joint meeting with budget to approve the school budget, which we did and passed on to the Budget Committee at the same time. And our July meeting will be on July the 11th at 4:30 instead of July the 4th. And that will be noticed, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody in it. July meeting will be on July the 11th at 4:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graves is not here tonight for the Highway Commission, he's our Vice Chair on highways.
I can speak to this. This resolution was passed last month, it was actually passed when we consent agenda, the state, even though we use their form, decided to change their form and make us add, which fiscally here is sort of politic, that's all this is.
So we've approved this resolution before, it's not new, but the state wants us to put 2016, 2017 on there, is there a motion that we do that? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Pomeroi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. General Operations, Mr. Becker. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Emergency Services, Mr. Gutter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're accepting the July meeting, will be on July the 11th at 4:00 PM.
Legislative Committee, Commissioner Taylor. Thank you, sir. Financial Management, Commissioner Schale. Commissioner Foster, Budget Committee, do you have anything tonight?
Just a little, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Under page one, I'd like...
Hey, hang on one second, I'm sorry, Commissioner Foster, turn over, you, the Finance Department memo, is that on your desk? Are you dealing with that?
I'm going to ask Mr. Irwin.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yes, on everybody's desk now, there should be two full budgets. The one that says Budget B in the lower corner is actually the secondary budget if the litigation tax increases or the EMS increases do not pass. The difference is in the budget is the first budget, the one without the B, or the primary budget, contains an additional $194,000 of EMS fees for the increase, and $194,000 of expenditures, which is to cover salary increases for employees and a deputy director or assistant director for a happy year. The other difference is, the primary budget, the one without the B in the corner, has $547,500 of additional litigation taxes in it, and also has raises for the jailers, which they've had a significant issue on retaining and holding on to. The budget without the B has $2.50 an hour increase, and the other budget has $1.25 an hour increase, which is a difference in appropriations of $534,756. The actual primary budget's projected fund balance is actually $12,742, less than the one with the B on the bottom, the reason being is the litigation, the taxes are $547.5, and the expenses $534.75, which is a difference of twelve. Does anybody have any additional questions on that?
Commissioner Crutcher.
Okay, so I have three.
Okay. Three budgets or two?
I have Budget B.
Right.
And then I have these here, to look at.
There should only be a budget that has a B on it, and which is possibly excerpts of what is different, and then a primary budget, which is a...
There's not three, okay.
No, no, I would...
I want to make sure there are three versions.
There should have only been a primary budget with the school budget behind it, and there should be two appropriations resolutions, one for the primary, and one with a B on it.
Okay.
I'm sure where the additional cost came from.
Okay.
There should be exactly the same, I haven't seen those, so I can look at one if somebody wants to...
Okay, so just to be clear, as I go back to Commissioner Foster, what we're saying is Budget A includes EMS raises and part of a year for deputy director position, and the raises for the jailers, a larger raise for the jailers, $2.50 versus $1.25.
And the litigation.
And that's based on the litigation taxes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Irwin. Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution 1606-02 is a resolution to increase the litigation taxes from the current fee of $10 to $60. And before I get into the detail, the budget process, which I hope I'm calling it tonight, started officially back in late October, when the Budget Committee met, and we met four or five times, and made a bunch of difficult decisions. And I want to commend my fellow legislative members, Lieutenant Chris Taylor, Commissioner Pomeroi, Commissioner Goode, Dr. Bill Taylor, Commissioner Becker, and Commissioner Mindon, for their hard work and their time involved in this. As you know, Mr. Chairman, the budget process this year, we had a daunting task in front of us, we had about $2.7 million in cuts that we were obligated to make to get to a operable budget. Fortunately, a couple of increases in fees came our way to offset some of the additional costs. 1606-02 is one of those fees, which would provide an additional $50 in litigation taxes, or approximately $547,500 in additional revenue, which would go to pay from the increase from $1.25 an hour for the correction officer, to $2.50 an hour for the correction officer. In our official meeting, I remember the Sheriff, Sheriff Weatherford, coming to the Budget Committee and saying, "Pay them a fine, pay them to get anybody to apply for correction officer position." At one point, he was down fifty positions in the jail, almost a complete shift, almost an inoperable situation for the jail, not to mention the safety of the correction officer and for the public. The best of my concern was, we had to address this issue first and foremost, provide a fair and competitive wage, because of some competitive issues in another county, open up a new correction facility, so we addressed that forthwith, and this resolution will support that. Without this increase, I'm afraid that the conditions in the jail will become inoperable, and we may be subject to oversight by the state. So, having said that, I move to approve Resolution 1606-02 to increase the litigation fees from $10 to $60.
Motion made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Commissioner Bill Taylor, you're up first in the queue. Commissioner Moate, you're up next.
Mr. Chairman, this litigation tax in this county is a fee. Taxes for everyone, a fee is for users. This is a user's fee to those who want to use the system, if they want to sue somebody who costs money. Right now, it's $10 for me to sue someone, and that's supposed to cover flights, electricity, heat, air, fees, and security, that's something called cost of duty. Four years ago, the state of Tennessee passed a law saying that the county could raise the fees to $60. It's a reasonable approach, and the majority of the counties and the state instantly went to that fee to help pay for these expenses. We stated $10 a fee, almost ridiculous. I would look at it as a cost of duty, do you understand? It's not cost of duty, this is what it is, it's $60, it's not cost prohibitive. I look at it also as a prudent and physically responsible way for us to help cover the cost of increasing costs of court house, security, and maintenance, and a positive vote is going to reflect that physical responsibility that we need desperately. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Moate, Commissioner Kemp, you're up next.
Mr. Chairman, I tried to, I made the motion to change the sequence of these events, I didn't do it out of disrespect. You know, I went to most of the budget meetings, I've been on budget, served four years on budget. So I know that sometimes you're told, you can do it this way, this is the only way you can do it. That's not always true. Not to be made with tape, anything, it's not exactly true, when you deal in the world of politics, you know, things kind of get stretched a little sometimes, maybe, but, you know, I was going to propose different measures, because I support this. I support it. I supported it in 2012, when we raised the jailers salaries. I know the burden, I've been over there several times. I support the ambulance service, but I can't support this resolution, because there's another way. There's always another way when you're in politics. No disrespect, I went to the meetings, I listened, listened to the presentations, and I was going to present another way to fund this. You can move pennies or something, that's tough decisions. This is a tough decision. It's not an easy decision to vote against. Yeah, we can raise fees on people, but, you know, let's say, this is about, you know, ambulance fees, the next one is, but, you know, you might be put in a situation to where you have to sue somebody, not that you won't to, and it's a monetary situation where you don't have the money to sue anybody to start with. Somebody owes you money, and you have to sue them to get money, so it's costing you more money to be able to get your money. So, I know that's a long way around it and everything, but, you know, don't think that I don't support you, I just don't support the way that we're supporting it. I don't support increased fees, increased taxes, I just don't, and most of you know that already, so I don't have to say it, so...
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Hightower, up next.
Yes, I just have two questions that I hope somebody maybe in budget can speak to, with regard to this one specifically. This is a fee, and I realize that it's a standard fee as it sits right now, we're not the only ones that charges fee. I would like for somebody to speak to how reasonable and customary this increase is in the fee, and is there an eventual cap on this fee? And, from the standpoint of the rate, and I understand that we're trying to do the same thing now in the county, that we spent the last three years and are still working with the school system on, to bring our county employees kind of into the 21st century. So I understand that we're looking at this, and I'm to understand that this $2.50 raise that we're looking at in this particular regard is also inclusive of their cost of living increase for this year, but I would like for somebody to speak on how did we land at the $2.50... did we land at the $2.50 per hour for several different job classifications? Um, did we just pick that number out of a hat? I mean, I looked at some of the comparative county wage rates, but it doesn't seem to jive with a standard $2.50 across the board.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer a couple of those questions if I can. Uh, in our budget meeting, Commissioner Kemp, uh, Sergeant Ford, Lieutenant Strong, uh, brought to our attention that there was a, a change in the statute not too long ago, which would allow the heat degree from what we currently work $10 per litigation up to $60. And I understand, I, I don't have any, uh, documents to back this up, but it's my understanding that we're one of the few counties that did not charge that rate. So it's set by statute, so I can't tell you what will happen to the statute, but that's how we got $10 to $60, just because most of the counties that she committed would charge that rate, and that was a way to finance more fees, uh, more revenue.
But this isn't, and I, I apologize for stopping you, this isn't something that we're going to revisit every year to continually increase this?
No ma'am, I don't, I don't revision re, uh, revisiting this. It's set until we decide as bodies to change it, and I don't know why we really want to.
Are we capped at all?
Yes, $60, $60 statute.
Okay, so we're at now, if we, if we vote to move it to the 60?
I think you would have to, uh, uh, make from, uh, uh, hang on, hang on.
Hang on one second, Mr., Mr. De, do you clarify that for us?
This would be the statutory cap for this fee, yes.
And when was that statute changed?
About three years ago.
So are we just kind of three years behind?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, if you'll address my second question on the $2.50.
$2.50, um, there's a new correctional, um, um, facility that opened up in a nearby county, uh, White County, about $0.30 an hour initially, uh, ahead of us in the starting pack, but they have step increases along the way. So within a year, their correction officers are quite a bit more than ours. We were provided a sharp in our budget fees compared to our salaries, initial starting salaries with those in the county, and the $2.50 cents an hour put us just slightly above the median rate for those counties that weren't the fee for correction officer. As I mentioned, the sheriff's, uh, was operating at a deficit of 50 positions per shift, and they were calling in, uh, uh, off, they were calling in off-the-road certified patrol deputies to work mandatory overtime in the jail. And the jail supervisors were working mandatory overtime, so that's showing a sustainable position. So to operate our jail safely for our inmates and our public, the $2.50 was decided upon as a, just to get us up to a competitive wage for those that are being offered in the county.
Okay, so this isn't something that, like in the schools, that we couldn't have gradually moved into, we have to do this last time?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Kemp, we could have gradually done that, but the, but the, the fact is that the sheriff's office was not getting any applications at all for correction officer positions, none at all. No one was even applying at the rate of $12.50 per hour. So to get the rate competitive right now, in my mind, is an emergency situation in the jail. So to get that rate competitive right now, we had to make that big jump, not necessarily the most financially, you know, conservative thing to do, but to be competitive and to staff the jail, because people were leaving the drugs. A couple of weeks ago, I heard, uh, to our, uh, veteran that there were about 20, 25 applications now for correction officer. Now, applications don't equate to full positions because they fail the, the polygraph, they fail the background, and they fail the physical, they fail the job well. But, uh, we are getting, we are now getting a lot of changes in the salary that will hopefully start next month.
Okay, so, and I hate to assume anything, so are we looking at the, the bulk of the people that we're giving raises to, our beginning level staff?
The, the entry sal- the entry level salary, $12.50, $14.50, about $10.50 an hour, that's the majority. When you, when you have turnover, you, you hire the, the entry level.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Hyde, Mr. Hyde.
Mr. Chairman, I have a direct question with our, my, uh...
Yes, sir.
Are there not any available high level at this time, not supporting indebtedness in our, uh, indebtedness form?
Yes, sir, there's about $1.6 million in indebted service in the long-term capital plan, but it's not being utilized at this time.
But it's not supporting anything at this time?
Not, not at this time.
I'm thinking differently, sir, that's supporting the future that basically might have this, something comes up that's kind of emergency funds, those things, it's, it's an issue on, it's like... And, and, and I've started, Chris, I've started to understand that, but this is an emergency, these people making sufficient money to survive is, uh, is an emergency, uh, both the ambulance and the, uh, jail folks. I also, uh, would like to ask a question, uh, concerning this, that is, what, uh, what is the, in the budget for county classified employees versus school system classified employees? I, I have been made aware of the fact that our employees are getting 1.5% versus 2% for the school system. Uh, and, and I don't know, I'm just asking a question for my information.
Let me see, Mr. Hyde has, has he posed the same question to me? Let me see if I can answer it, and Mr. Long, if you can jump in and correct me if I don't, don't state it correctly. My understanding, Mr. Hyde, is, is that because the schools on the classified side, they have a four-year rotation where they're trying to do the same thing we're trying to do with the jail and with EMS workers, where they're trying to bring some of theirs competitive. It's a 1.5% raise, but they're raising the bands on the classified salaries on, on that four-year rotation that they're doing to try to bring, like bus drivers and think, I don't know the bus drivers of this year, but to make it competitive. And so I think that average is out to 2% instead of 1.5. Is that correct, Mr. Long?
We were told an average of 1.5, but I mean, as far as the average of the, I guess, Ms. Pritchard or Dr. Phillips, I'm not sure, the number that was provided, how it was calculated.
With, without objection, we'll ask Ms. Pritchard, Dr. Phillips to answer this question.
Mr. Hyde, we did exactly this year what we did last year in our budget. Um, there, there were no differences. We have three different areas, you're well aware, we have classified, there's either a step, most of those steps are right at 2%. We have 20-plus, which is certified, the majority of our staff fall under the 20-plus, about 55% of our total certified staff, they will get 1.5%. Uh, and then 0 to 19, if you average all of those scales between 0 and 19, which are approved by the board and the state board, uh, for every school district, they average around 1.7, 1.75.
And not 2%?
No, sir, so we have three different places, uh, depending on classification of employees. And that's exactly what we did last year.
Not that I agree with what was done last year, but I have, I have a problem...
I didn't, I didn't say that you did.
I have a problem, Mr. Chairman, with, uh, $1.6 billion that we could use to assist these people. I know where Mr. Taylor was coming from, and I would like to make a motion amendment that we utilize that money to support, uh, what we can increase these salaries for these people from, uh, that fund.
Second. Okay, hang on, one second, sir, let me make sure that we can do that real quick. I, I don't know if this is the appropriate place since we're on a resolution about the litigation. What we might have to do is have, is vote on it. Let me check if the law...
Well, it's merely a different funding for it, I don't know why.
Right, well, we're not on the budget, is the thing, we're on the, the resolution on the litigation tax, not on the actual budget.
And you need to understand, you know, go to that.
I, I, I think, Mr. Hyde, what we would have to do is vote this amend, or this resolution down, and then bring that up as a funding source when we address the budget, if that makes sense.
Uh, that makes sense. I'll just reiterate that I support these folks. I support probably more knowing the work they do in the jail. I support them more than what we're given. And there's a reasonable way of helping them security this and probably be more secure than a litigation tax, which could flow further down. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I may have to vote in an unpleasant fashion here to get at what I would like to see happen for these people.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde, I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I would have to agree with colleague, uh, Dr. Bill Taylor that the statute, TCA named this inappropriate, uh, and, and that confuses a lot of people being called a litigation tax, and it is a fee. I, I, I can't believe that, um, we continue to talk about all these counties that we are behind, and we constantly want to catch up at any late, at every meeting, somebody mentions another county. Um, and, uh, Mrs. Strong, in her continued diligence, which has taken that office to a whole, unbelievable plateau, uh, as, as we build this opportunity. We know, everybody in this building right here knows, and especially if you've done this for a long time, many years, the jail, obviously on the sheriff's fault, the jail has a construction piece, it's a disaster. Um, this fee, as was mentioned, uh, would add somewhere in the neighborhood, a very conservative figure of more than a half million dollars, load back into jail and make this, and, um, if we don't do something more, where's that amount going to come from? Also, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, I'm, I'm personally not a, uh, I'm, I'm, this, this Mr. Taylor, I've got two names here, I'm with, Mr. Chris Taylor, is just because we got a few dollars here, a few dollars here, that's just not spending on. Um, I mean, we're, we're just now getting, the schools are just now getting to where we are actually building funds, where we're not spending every dime, uh, every year, so, um, we obviously can change this, uh, if the majority of the commissioners sit, but I, I can't imagine not doing what most other, what the state legislature, which never agrees with nothing, obviously came to a consensus, this thing, that this made sense to allow counties to do it, and those have it, we haven't, so, Mr. Chairman, I think we should pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Good. Commissioner Chris Taylor.
If you'll indulge me for just saying, one of the things we're going to address real quick, and it might help for later discussions in case, I don't want to really have to get in the queue to talk on Sunday two. On the budget committee, we're approaching things a little bit differently, and we tried to do it this year, but we were kind of told to hold on a little bit. One of the things is going to involve the volunteer fire departments in every 501(c) that we deal with. We're putting them on notice this year that starting next year, every year, they'll be asked to justify any funds they have, kind of a zero accounting principle, in the sense that what we're going to do is we're going to say, there's X number of dollars available for 501(c) donations, and that's going to be based upon Mr. Long's projections of how lean the county mayor may not be. So if there's no money in the county, like say the non-recession, we won't have the money for donations.
Mr. Taylor, we need to, we need to move back to the resolution.
Okay, I apologize. Getting the resolution in real quick, um, when Ms. Strong said it, this came up, and the reason it's written is there's only one purpose you can spend this money on, if you increase the fee for tax, whatever you want to call it, and that's for courthouse maintenance and security, plain and simply, you can't do anything else with the money. It was written for the idea of funding sheriff's departments that work, and, and the understanding was from the state that they know it's hard to fund them, two of our biggest expenses are the jails and schools. So this money's earmarked for the exact purpose that we wanted it for, which was to give money to the jailers. I don't disagree with everybody here that they, I wish we could do more. The reason that number came about was Ms. Trout in, uh, sheriff's, Weatherford's office did a comparison study and did exit interviews with probably the last 50 to 60 employees we've had. Over a past year and a half, we've spent, lost over one and a half million, or, I'm sorry, over the last three years, we've lost one and a half million dollars because of attrition, having to hire new employees, the hiring process, training, how long it takes before you get them. The idea was that this fund, we had to try to make as neutral as we could, she came up with the suggestion that, hey, you've never funded this, and it's an option you can do. So that's where it came about, and that's why we're doing this far. Where we got to the $2.50, that was from the sheriff's department, and they felt that was one that would make them competitive enough, because Southern County's a great place to live too, we didn't have to be the, the highest paying.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Uh, Commissioner Shale.
Um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, when I sat through, um, all the budget hearings, um, I don't serve on the budget committee, but I felt like it was very important to sit through those hearings in order to make an informed decision on the budgets. And, um, specifically speaking to this, um, motion that we're, um, resolution that we're speaking of, um, Ms. Catherine Strong, um, has done a great job in her office, um, when she presented her budget, um, she came very, she came very well prepared, um, and came prepared outside of the box. She had some great ideas when she presented, and she did her homework. She found, um, this fee after speaking with several other, um, counties and county clerks that were charging this fee, um, that is, you know, was set by the state that she could charge $60, and found that we were only charging, um, the $10. Um, Ms. Strong, um, not only found the fee that we were charging, but she also did a lot of research as to what the other counties were actually collecting, what percentages of that fee that they were charging, were they actually in return collecting? Um, and she determined that they were collecting close to three-quarters of a million dollars. Being that our budget committee felt like that it was very important to keep that at a very conservative number, they didn't want to put that full three-quarters of a million dollars into the budget, and so they kept a very conservative number, um, just a little over, um, a half a million dollars. And so, um, I'm very much in support of this, because I feel like it's a fee, um, based on a service used. Um, and so I've spent a lot of time also speaking with, um, our sheriff, um, regarding his budget and his needs, and we're obligated by the state to meet certain guidelines, and I feel, in my opinion, that this is a very fiscally responsible way to meet that need, and so I will be, um, voting in support of this resolution.
Commissioner Ray.
Uh, thank you, sir. One of the things I, I have, have done with the, uh, in my job as an educator, is to visit the jail to provide outbound services for students who are incarcerated. Um, and this last spring, when I was there, um, I noticed that there was not nearly the staff that they needed. Um, it made it much more difficult for the, the jail to operate. Um, I talked to people that I knew who were correctional officers, who were working several double shifts a week sometimes. Uh, we've got to, we've got to, um, help try to solve the problems we've got with, uh, correctional officers leaving, and I believe this is a good way to do it. Um, if I don't sue somebody, this costs me nothing. It's not a tax. A tax is basically broad over the, over the entire population. This is only people who choose to file a suit. Now, if you win your lawsuit, probably you're going to get that money back at the settlement. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I will support this in order to do what needs to be done to help improve the maintenance and the, uh, cutback on the attrition in the jails.
Commissioner Hen, I'm, I'm sorry, have you done, Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hen, this, uh, this is not free money.
Somebody's going to pay this. And, and you assume that somebody just decided they wanted a lawsuit, so then they had to, come up with this amount of money. You've got, uh, if you've ever talked to people in Southern County who has rental property, and, uh, they find themselves in a position that, uh, they've got to get somebody out of that property, and, and they come down here, they flip the whole bill. I mean, it's, it's the, the, the person that's losing the lawsuit has to move out, but they don't pay the litigation fees. Somebody who's, uh, somebody who's already paying lots of taxes, if they own lots of property, to have a business where they, where they rent properties out, and if they deal with somebody, then they have to come down here and do it. If you've got, uh, car lots that are accepting payments, and those people won't, uh, pay for the car, then they may have to come down here and, and, so this is, this is not free money. It's still, it's still the citizens of Southern County's going to ante up this money, and I don't know, but it's probably is a good way to do it. It's probably a better way than what we've, what we've been struggling with. But let's don't flip it off just like nobody's going to pay it. Somebody's going to pay it, and they're going to be Southern County.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hen. Uh, Commissioner Bill Taylor, Mr. Hyde, you're up next.
I'm first, I was, I was...
Okay, hang, hang on, I'm sorry, Mr. Hyde. Let me just let everybody know what I've, what I've been trying to do tonight is get every...
Let me just let everybody know, what I've been trying to do tonight is get everybody who hasn't spoken yet first, before we get people that have gone multiple times, so, uh, just in terms of Chairman's privilege, I, yeah, I think we've had several conversations where we've had things done, and then not everybody got to speak at least once, so I've tried to, I've tried to do that, and, uh, yeah, just something around me, Mr. Palmeroy is in the queue, and he's not spoken yet.
Yes, uh, first of all, to condemn, I mean, uh, commend everybody that was on the board. Uh, we, we did spend a lot of hours, but that's what we signed up for, that's not something to pat ourselves on the back. Uh, however, serving this county i- is a great honor, and it's a privilege, and as we talk about this, uh, to agree with Commissioner Hinton, uh, we, I think we take it very seriously, and we understand that it's people's money. However, uh, talking about, is we, we live in a county that wants to have everything that every other county has, we wanna talk about, uh, how we need volunteer fire departments, we need fire service, we need jailers, we need staff, we need the best jail, we need, we need, we need, we need, but we also have a county that doesn't wanna pay, 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 pay. And so, that's a good task, we, as a budget, we figured out a way to do that. Uh, I have sat on this committee, and listened, and sat in this, this chair, uh, when, and voted no on the school budget. In 2014, it wasn't balanced. Supposedly, I'm this guy who's pro-school, I believe I was one of the six that voted no. One of the three voted no. So, I know what I do, and if anybody can't see through this charade of, uh, what we're trying to do here, is we've come up with a reasonable way of funding services that this county needs, but we have to continue to play these games. So seeing nobody else knew in the queue, I believe what we discussed earlier in the year, this is the proper time to call for the question.
Mr. Palmeroy's called for the question. Second by Ms. Krueger. Sorry, Mr. Poskasil. Yeah, let's put that on the board.
Call for the question, um, resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote. Receiving sixteen affirmative votes, the call for the question is approved. Mr. Chairman, we're back on, ready to vote on the resolution.
I see.
We have reloaded the resolution, sixteen oh six oh two is now on the board, we are voting in favor against the resolution. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving nineteen affirmative votes, resolution is approved by the two-thirds required. Uh, Chairman Cawthon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution sixteen oh six dash oh three is a resolution increasing the ambulance transport rates or fees for the county. During our budget hearings, uh, Chief Douglas came to us, and, uh, he has a, he has a favorable situation similar, similar to what we have in the jail. We have, uh, we are a training ground for EMTs, and once they get trained and get a little bit of road experience, they leave us for a little bit, and then come in rate, go to another county. So, being faced with the, with the budget challenges that we were, uh, Chief Douglas came up with an innovative way to fund some of those salary increases for some of those people that are trained, that we need to retain, that provide a live service, service to our county. So, uh, Chief Douglas proposed, as you see in this resolution here, a myriad of increases for a different kind of services rates. Uh, this would go partially increase some of the, uh, the EMTs, uh, in various levels, and also for some support staff. So, I move to approve this resolution to increase ambulance transport rates.
Motion made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Poskasil. I see no one in the queue, so we will move to vote.
The resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving twenty-two affirmative votes, the resolution is approved. Chairman Cawthon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Resolution sixteen oh six dash oh four is a resolution funding the various departments at the, uh, at the level that we are calling budget pay. Uh, with the passage of the resolutions, two resolutions before, funding for the, the increased litigation fee, and the funding for the increased ambulance services, I move to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Foster, seconded by Mr. Palmeroy. Uh, Mr. Hyde is first in the queue.
Mr. Chairman, I would get to say now, but I was wanting to say previously. I hope we understand what we're saying here, and, and it bothers me a little bit, because everyone else is doing sixty dollars, we should do sixty dollars. I think it's a, a real plus for Southern County that we have a system where we are providing such good services for less fees. Because Metro Nashville has a higher tax increase, we should do what Metro's doing. Because Wilson County has a higher tax rate than us, we should do what they do. And I'm not, and this is not a pro for tax increase or against it, it's the attitude that I'm agreeing with, so, because everyone else is doing it, we should do it, it should be a better in our town, but we're not happy to, that we have a good government, good services, and we don't have to do things because everyone else is doing. And I would like to know if this would be the appropriate time to make the suggestion.
Yes, sir.
We do that one point six toward, uh, to equalize our county employees with the school system, and, uh, I haven't had a chance to look at this information, but any information that indicates that the classified employee rate, it might be easier, you just gave us a percentage, uh, Mr. Long, would that be easier?
Because there's so many different types of school employees. Okay. Let me, Mr. Chairman, let me see if I can, uh, you're, you're saying that you want to raise the classified employee rate, it might be easier, you just gave us a percentage, uh, Mr. Long, would that be easier? Because there's so many different types of school employees. Mr. Hyde, do you know, we can make your motion however you want, I was just wondering if you had a percentage in mind that you wanted to raise. Two percent, two. To go from one point five to two percent? Okay, okay. Uh, hang on, hang on one second, Mr. Long, we got, we got a, Mr. Long, if you will come to this mic, your mic is not working, if you would come to this mic, we have a, a motion for amendment by Mr. Hyde to raise the county classified to two percent, seconded by Commissioner Mo Taylor. A funding source would be the unallocated pennies in the capital, uh, budget? That motion's been made, Commissioner Taylor, that's, that's okay with you, no funding source? Mr. Hyde, does that, does that capture what you want the motion, what you want to use?
Ken Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought my question was to the finance. It is, but I'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman, of what I think about.
He's coming, he's coming up here, he's, he's due his numbers. Go ahead and speak while we're waiting on the finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to make everyone aware that, uh, the pay for county general employees, school employees, is based on totally different mechanics, and Dr. Phillips would like to address that. But before you vote to reallocate our debt service fund, remember, I'm totally for our employees, yes, they deserve much more, on the school side and county general side, but by reallocating that money, what you're doing eventually is pushing us into tax increase because we are not even finished with our school building program or any other county general projects. Once you close the window on your available funds for debt service, you have no other monies to issue debt, to finish capital projects. So I wanna make you aware of that, and if you're really conservative, you're not going to just get into that money and spend it all, and then not have monies to build additional schools, and do the kind of capital projects we're gonna need as we grow in county. So I wanna make you aware of that, that is not being conservative.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Sir, I'm sorry.
I'd like to respond.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I think I'm about as conservative as anybody on this commission, so I resent the fact that I might be considered non-conservative. We have already been pushed toward another tax increase, and I will take the responsibility for moving money that would be in industrial development parks, who are well-reserved county employees, I will take that responsibility. We have pushed ourselves toward another tax increase, this will not do.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde, it's okay, I'm gonna go to Mr. Longley.
The counter number. Mr. Chairman, the, for the county general fund, including benefits, it would be under a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So if we moved a hundred and twenty-six, and then you construct me to just a budget type.
So we're talking about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars?
Thousand would be the difference, one point five and two percent. For the county general, about eighty-two-hundred and some dollars from the highway.
I think our well-reserved county employees should have that much money.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Longley. Uh, Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I seconded the, uh, the motion because that was part of me, what Mr. Hyde had discussed was part of my, uh, attempt before we started the meeting to move the tax level. Was not a disrespect, it's, it's how you do it, you allocate your pennies to be able to spend your pennies. I was gonna do two pennies out of debt service, which equals eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars in the day's penny market. One penny is worth four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars in the base property tax rate. So, one penny is four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, two pennies is eight-hundred-and-twenty. Having more of the cover, or, or cover, but I wasn't done with that. I know even people don't wanna say it, and God knows the criticism I'm gonna get for what I'm about to say, but guess what? I can say it, and I can lay my head down to lie. I was gonna move two pennies from schools, not because I had anything against the schools, not because I think they don't need it, not because, you know, this one's getting that one, and this one ain't getting that one, but because it was a physically conservative, and I think if I'm not considered conservative, Webster's need to redefine the dictionary description. We've got two billion dollars on budget there, which in the bad thing, I'm not knocking that, I'm not putting you back down, that's, I'm not, that's what I'm not trying to do. I mean, you don't agree with me, go both the way out. You don't like what I have to say, turn a deaf ear to what I have to say. But, four pennies, which I don't think, you know, would, we would have a little left to play with, not to play with, but you know what I mean, I mean, that's one point six million dollars from forty thousand to change, so, that was my intention, of amending the agenda. That was my, evidently, it's mother people think the way I do, I'm not the only crazy, I guess, so, uh, but, it's not an awful anybody, it's just a way to not raise taxes. And, and we're, and we are moving towards another tax increase, I've said it, I predicted it, it's gonna happen. The only way to prevent it is we spend it. Don't spend it, don't ask for more, you don't need more. But we get in our situations too, sometimes where it was mentioned earlier, a lot of citizens.
Resolution. Hey, Mr. Taylor, if you could, uh, you still say.
Yeah, and, and on that resolution, you know, I don't.
Excuse me, excuse me, let me, let me hear you just for one second, for sure. We're actually, those of you that are in the queue, we're actually on Mr. Hyde's amendment right now, so about, okay, okay. And, and let me say this, because, you know, the, the thing is, the reality of budgets is, no budget is perfect. I, I wish if we had, I think as Mr. Palmeroy already said, I wish we had blank checkbooks so we could write everybody what their worth, like, our county employees, everywhere, school, everywhere, they deserve as much money as we can give them, I mean, I wish we could outfit every volunteer fire department in the county, we're, you know, we're given the difficult task of making our budgets balanced, and these, these discussions get heated, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with that, because we've got people that are passionate about what they believe, and that is American democracy. So, I wanna, I wanna say all that to say this, is, let's please tonight, whatever, whatever side of the argument that we come from, let's avoid the tit-for-tat back and forth with comments. I will, from this point on, if anything's said towards any other commissioner or any public official, I will, uh, rule you out of order, uh, just to move the debate along. Uh, we'll start off, you know, start off with the assumption that the Greeks always make that no one, no one screws up on purpose, everyone holds their deep heartfelt opinion, and we'll respect that, so that's our, uh, the Boy Scouts have left now, but that was another civics lesson for them. But, uh, let me ask if, uh, thank you, Commissioner Mo Taylor, uh, everyone, we have five people in the queue right now, if you, I'm gonna ask you to do this, if you're, uh, not wanting to speak on Mr. Hyde's amendment, if you would please remove yourself from the queue. So we're only, we'll get you back in on the budget, but if you're not willing to speak about Mr. Hyde's amendment, please remove yourself from the queue.
Can we ask that amendment be reclarified again?
Yes, let me, let me see if I can reclarify for you, Ms. Kim. The amendment to the budget is that we would take out of our, uh, David, what's the specific fund we're pulling this out of?
The General Debt Service Fund.
General Debt Service Fund, and we would take a hundred and twenty-six thousand?
Just to be safe, we'd probably better tie it to, to, from one and a half to two percent, and take up to a hundred and thirty, because there's some calculations, also up to a hundred and thirty.
Okay, up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to bring our county, uh, general classified employees up from one point five percent to two percent. I'm not, I'm not sure if that clarified, but that's the, that's our motion. Uh, Commissioner Bill Taylor.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the concept of, of moving money from one place to the other, I appreciate the concept of spending money, uh, to pay for the county employees, also appreciate the concept of saving money. We've been spending money a lot in the past county commission, taking from the hospital fund, taking from here, taking over there to balance the budget, now, by passing litigation tax, we've balanced the budget, the budget is balanced, we don't have to worry about taking money. We have other expenses coming up, this courthouse, that we have to pay for every, 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 almost every month, is falling apart, we've got more mold, we've got more, uh, problems within, it's gonna come up, the raises I can add. We've got also expenses of that landfill, as, as, that our point's gonna be, we've got some expenses that we know are coming up, that we have to fund and pay for, so taking money out of debt service to, um, to, uh, do something we've already done, we're giving everybody a raise, I think is, again, physically and conservative, and.
Mr. Taylor asked us to make that statement.
Oh, my bad. Nevertheless, we need to rebuild up, we need to rebuild our debt service, we need to pay for things that have come up, that have come up, and we need to hold on to some monies that's been spent, and a hundred percent. Uh, I think, uh, had we had, been thinking of this nine months ago, when the budget system started, we could have been talking about it, but bringing it up now at the last minute is inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Uh, Commissioner Chris Taylor. I'm in, I'm in, sir. What's that? Okay, okay. Uh, Commissioner Gute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, once again, I'm following Dr. Taylor, uh, in agreement, uh, and I'm glad you mentioned the landfill because of, of some of the expenses that we know that's coming up, and, and, Mr. Chairman, I, I heard your, uh, comment, and I won't mention specifics, but, uh, Mr. Palmeroy makes a charade, uh, the school budget, um, has been available, uh, with public meetings and presented, uh, four months, um, and available for admission, uh, I had been talking to Dr. Phillips today to ask, uh, specific questions about it, and did any commissioners besides those maybe on education, attempt at any given time to ask one question, send one email, or inquire about anything, and answer nothing? one question in one email or inquire about anything and answer nothing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask. I get to hear about, I get to hear about previous commissions being bad about that. Mr. Longley, I'm going to, I'm going to rule you out of order, so I can rule him out. That's okay. He can sit down. What's that? I'm sorry, Mr. Longley. Yes, sir, just getting in the queue, absolutely. Mr. Goo, I just asked that you not direct it any towards old commissioners or anyone else to speak to this.
And I didn't refer to the old commissioners.
Excuse me, excuse me, other, other commissioners.
This body, so, and, Mr. Chairman, I was led with this, is, again, we've done a good job, and we don't all agree with how we get to what we spend and where, how we get the funds, and that's the good thing about this country and this state. But we do have a process, and it is a long budget process, which many people come that are not on the committee, and in previous budgets were never questioned, we luckily allowed them to do their work. So I appreciate and I agree with Dr. Taylor. Let's move on, and respect those that have done the committee's work, and move on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goo. Mr. Palmer, you're next to me.
I just got some clarification questions. First of all, we've already passed litigation tax, I believe, in the last week. And we've also already passed the increased EMS rates, correct?
Yes.
So this amendment would not be taken, because from an original, Commissioner Hyde, he thought that would be a better way to find, they say. So in essence, I think everybody needs to know, from what I understand, we're still going to have that revenue, plus taking revenue from, I mean, that's, I mean, let me add that to your, Mr. Hyde, is that your end of your motion?
Mr. Chairman, we may be taking care, yes, you're right about the first part, I would have liked to have done that revenue thing. However, there are still many county general employees, such as employees of some of our office owners here who are here, who do a tremendous job for us, and they're not getting this increase. So this amount of money, which is only a small portion of the 1.6 million in there, not going to use at this time, we give everyone an equal shot at the very.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. I'd like, Mr. Palmer.
So, so, to be clear, to be, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, I believe what we're doing here is, that's fine. I mean, I heard one of, you know, somebody say, hey, it's just $125,000. I mean, if we're going to vote to give them more money, let's vote to give them more money, but it does not change the fact that we're going to have extra revenue going in. So I just want that to be clear.
And Mr. Longley came up to correct something. On the, on the amendment, it's not 130,000 when he pulled everything back out. Mr. Longley, would you like to explain it real quick?
Yes, sir, I actually pulled the budget back here because of several numbers, and I say they play with each other, interplay because we have leap year, it was last year, and we have the jailer's salary, so I went and I actually put it up on the system, and it's about $190,000. Apologize for the error, that's why I was double checking the way you're talking.
So if you couldn't hear, Mr. Longley, it's $191,578.80. So we're willing to, just something, we're willing to increase the proposed budget to 2%, which is $190,000, which, by the way, to help people make this vote, I don't think it will, being on the budget committee for hours and hours and hours and hours, and looking at these numbers, we cut both of the fees from the Chief Douglas brought and that Ms. Strong brought, down by 50% of what the average had been over the last three years. So a very, very conservative number, just to make sure that it doesn't change, because in case things have spiked. So if that helps the commissioners make a vote, I still think that extra $190,000 will probably still be put back into the budget by the money from the fee increase that is on the past. Just clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Commissioner Ray.
Yes, sir. It's possible for time director of schools to come back up there, because he explained this earlier, and I don't know if I misheard or what, but it doesn't sound like the same numbers we're talking about, so could Tom explain this again?
I'm going to, we're not really, I'm going to overrule that, Mr. Kim, just because we're talking about the, we're talking about county general, my schools.
I, I understand, but the, but the comment was to bring them far with what schools are, and I don't think schools were, employees were given the 2% raise.
Right, well, I mean, we're at semantics here because we changed the motion to 2% from 1.5 to 2% on the county. So, did you have any answers, Mr. Ray?
No.
Uh, Mr. Kim, or, excuse me, Ms. Kim. Ms. Kim doesn't miss me.
Again, a clarification here for the, I guess, for the budget committee. I mean, EMS came to the budget committee, and Sheriff Weatherford came to the budget committee specifically with issues pertaining to their employees, am I correct? And so you worked hard to address those issues. Did any other department come to you and say, our employees are underpaid and we need to have more money for them? Did anybody?
Mr. Foster, why don't you address that?
Commissioner Kim, yes, ma'am, they did. Search court clerk came and said that she would like an extra amount of dollars to address her salary situation in total. There are several other departments that came with individual issues, some of those didn't have anybody, that came with particular payroll issues.
And if you gave them everything they wanted, where would we be? Instead of 1.5, where would we be?
If we gave them everything they wanted?
Yeah.
Initially, all the departments gave them 5% salary increase across the board. Now, that was one of the first things we did, to knock that down to where it is now, to 1.5%. So that's, that's just, I guess, a modus operandi, you know, go, you know, ask for the, ask for the kind of thing. So, but we did address every single department that came with the budget committee, their particular salary question.
Okay, and so from the standpoint of the 1.5, are we targeting the funds that they get 1.5% as a, as a lump sum, and they can disperse it as they want? They want to give all their employees 1.5, they can do it if they want to give, if another department decides if they want to give merit and go a little higher, they can do what they want to within the county, correct?
They are, they are elected department members, they're elected officials. So we, all we do is allocate the places. And so if we gave a particular department 1.5%, as far as I'm concerned, there are three to give an employee a 3% raise or 0% raise. So it's up to the department to allocate. Some will follow the guideline, frankly, to give everyone 1.5%. Some will not follow the guideline, and the justice hours, we've already seen that, in the presentation, some department hasn't actively managed their payroll, some will go with the general incentive. You know, it's up to them, basically, as far as we're concerned.
Okay, so we're sitting here tonight, and we're trying to, you know, and I'm going to use the school system as an example, a good one at that. Dr. Phillips came to us and said, three years ago, that, you know, his employees were below their pay scale per category, and he brought us a plan and said, you know, if we take these categories and every year we step it up. We seem to be sitting here tonight wanting to raise everybody's pay just willy-nilly, and just trying to figure it out where we're going to take it from, when I think this is a part of the process for the budget committee. And if, you know, we got a department that feels like their employees are not paying to scale, then they need to come forward to the budget committee and prove to you guys that they're not to scale. I don't think we need to be sitting here tonight trying to figure this out and just spending money willy-nilly.
And I agree with you completely, Mr. Kim. Like I said, we did entertain, we had budget meetings with every department, and they were free to bring up any issues at the meantime. And I might add that the fuel price in the day is struggling on about 0.2% inflation. So 1.5% increase applies not on making one rich, it certainly bought heavy rig replacement. And it's on par with, with, with other areas.
And I think it needs to be something that's targeted and planned and not done here in a couple hours. I mean, I just don't think that's good business.
And one other thing I'd like to address is some other commissioners that have spoke about this. We, we do have an off-screen budget, and we do have challenges going forward. Collectibility of these fees are uncertain because they're new, so that, that concerns me somewhat. We do have things coming down, that will liability that will be on the rise. We know that we were going to have jail maintenance issues that are going to come up. And so I, I feel that we probably need to stay where we can and let the, let the process do its work.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Ms. Kim, do you have any other questions or comments? Mr. Hinton and then Mr. Goo.
This fee that we approved is designated, is that not true? It has to go, goes to two places, and I hear two words.
Mr. Hinton, we're going to go to the law director to explain that.
$25 goes to jail security, courthouse security, and $25 goes to county general.
To county general? Is, could that money going to county general be used for salary increase?
Because it's the county general, so it can be used for whatever it can be used by.
Okay, so half of it. Hey, I'm in on one second, I'm getting, let me go, Mr. Longley, give you clarification.
Because we already have more than that spent on the courthouse's security, the $50 or the $2.25 litigation taxes makes up the 547.5 in budget A that funds approximately half of the jailers' raises, the difference between $1.25 and $2.50 now. So it's actually, that's what it's being used for in budget, or the primary budget.
So the 50 is spent. What we, okay, so if, if the county general employees are going to get this money, it's going to have to be done the way it's on the floor to do it.
Yes, sir, I think so.
Now, I hate to debate Ms. Kim, but she sits close to me. But I suspect if you wanted to call recess and have these department kids come in, I suspect they'd do a really good job of justifying way more than 2%. Because I suspect every one of them got people in their offices that are not making any more close to the scale than they are in other counties around us. So i- if you want to be convinced, you didn't, the budget being, I'm not criticizing the budget being, I don't want any department, thank you very much, all of them. But, but some motivation went from five to one and a half. We pretty well took care of their exorbitant demands when we went from five to one and a half. So I think very seriously that one and a half is unreasonable if we started out trying to get fat. So I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to vote for those folks to get the same amount of money that's, that's budgeted into school budget. And if that's wrong, I'll just live with it.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Mr. Goo and Mr. Palmer, you're on deck.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question, let the director of schools address, and maybe follow up if there's no objection. Because I, I do think Mr. Ring was misunderstood, well, in his point of, we did start in last year's budget, I think you would recall, of going at the same average as the school year. We did that. We did the exact same thing this year. I'm not against paying people more, we, God knows, but most of these people need to have more money. But that percentage will, it's his percentage, so all these people that have said, I want to make the exact same thing that we're making schools, that will change that. I think that Mr. Mr. Ring's point, without, without.
Without objection, I'll let Dr. Phillips address that question. And I'll call Detective Ray for this understanding.
I think there are a couple of things, and I think we're all for the county general employees to raise one and a half, 2% or whatever, whatever you think is right to do. There are a couple of things that need to be clarified. One, when you look at the school district employees, the classified employees are just one second. Here, I think they're being talked about as every employee in the county. So there's a difference there, because our teachers are only getting one and a half percent, which is about 55% a little bit higher of our total group. So if you're looking at, well, we want to be fair, then you wouldn't have to have enough funds to have teachers get 2% because everybody that you're talking about in county general's 2%. So it's not the same as some of the commissioners have said. Another thing that's interesting, too, if you look at the total wages of all employees in the county and divide that on an average against the total classified salaries in the school system, there's a big disparity. We have over 75% of our employees that make less than $16,000 a year of those people that you're talking about trying to compare to. So there's some things that you need to be sure you understand and hadn't been talked about that are all 100% factual. The last thing is county employees get a longevity paycheck. They get a longevity bonus that the school system does, they don't get. Now, it's capped at $2,100, depending on how long you've been here, but all of those classified employees at school system that have been there 20 years, which we have many, many, many of them, they would love for y'all to vote to be the same. We'll take that $2,100 that you're getting out every year over here at the county, we'll be more than happy to take that. Because all of those things I just told you are 100% accurate. So I don't know if y'all would make, amend a motion to give all the school system employees longevity pay to match the county and then have the one and a half go to two, or not.
Hold on one second, Mr. Hyde, do you have a question?
Mrs. Director, you said one, one, the teachers, but that's not inclusive of the step and the salary increase.
We, we don't do the, we don't do the step for 20-plus, not on the step. So the 20-plus employees, which is the majority.
But everyone else is.
I'm sorry?
Everyone else is getting more.
No, sir, they're getting exactly what I told you. All classified employees get 2%, take their salary and multiply it by 2%. The 0 to 19 get the amount that they're guaranteed by law they get on their step. So if they go from experience of 11 years to 12 years, that's how much they get. It averages 1.7% for every step.
But if you're getting more than 1.5, do you include the step?
No, sir, we don't include, there are no steps, Mr. Hyde, that one way, long time ago. 20-plus have no steps.
I'm not talking about the 20-plus, I'm talking about the one to 20.
They only get the step, which is 1.7%.
You gave them no increases?
No, sir. They get 1.7, and that's it. That's how we came to the number. You have three categories, you have the guaranteed 1.7, 0 to 19, 20-plus gets 1.5 while salary, and classified gets 2%. That's it. It's not complicated math.
No one got more than that? No one in this system got more?
Oh, sure, they changed job classifications, didn't they? Sure. Well, we have people that move up, move around, and that's no different than any, I mean, every part of county government. But that's how we base our salaries for, in the increases. One other thing that's important, you know, kind of in this conversation as well, is the longevity pay that the school system employees do not get at the county. We had county general did not increase insurance rates this year. The school system did, and that's great for the county, they don't have to pay anymore for their premiums, and that's wonderful. And hopefully the school system insurance probably will be there at some point, but we're still pretty young in our process. One other thing, too, that I want to mention, our 1.5%, our certified 20-plus, that's where your highest wage earners are. So the 1.5% for those people this year to be ultra-conservative, if that's a, if that's a term, we did not add that to their base. So the school system left themselves some flexibility for next year. So all those teachers that are going to receive a one and a half percent on their salary, we're not adding that to their base, so therefore, next year, I won't be responsible for that same dollar amount, because I don't know what the budget's going to be next year. I think it's really wise for the county to talk about some of that kind of stuff in the future, because use some flexibility that you don't, currently, the way that you're doing tonight, you don't have, you're going to be locked in forever. But the school system side, we, we have talked about that, and I've talked to principals about it. Everybody that's 20-plus for one and a half percent, they're not guaranteed that in future years.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Dr. Taylor. I see some commissioners calling my name. So I don't know if the finance director would put a dollar figure on that, and I know we went into time figures, not, we're obviously talking about millions there, or a few hundred thousand. Mr. Chairman, I should say this, and again, this has been through the budget process, and here's what I'm having a hard time, and it's two weeks, that is, I promise.
Mr. Chairman, I should say this, again, this has been through the budget process, and here's what I'm having a hard time, and it's two weeks' time, as promised. Dr. Phillips, Chairman Cox, and the school board off this off-year, obviously, big commitment, has brought us a balanced budget. We, we, in the twelve years I've been here, and many years I've followed that, we don't get any balanced budgets from the school system, get thirds of that cash. Also, we started this process with the step earlier, and we discussed it in this body, last budget year, and this year. And we are trying to move into that, and to, to one point, we want to make unequivocally clear into the department heads and elected officials, which we've been trying to say, they decide what they pay. And to Catherine Strong's credit and two other elected officials, they specifically said, I want you to tell me, give me a lump sum dollar and let me pay my employees, because some deserve this much and some don't. So we're moving towards that, and each office, department, and elected officials should know, they can decide how they want to spend that money. So there's somebody that might deserve a one percent, someone might deserve a three percent, and that's why they're elected to be department head, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goode, Mr. Palmeroy, and then Mr. Becker.
Yes, thank you. Speaking to the processes we've done all night here, you know, as a budget committee, every budget that came to us that was balanced, counted they approved, here's our revenues, here's our expenditures, that's our job, I believe. I don't think that, maybe I'm wrong on that, I don't know of anybody that was unbalanced, maybe there was a cut there, but the point there is not to say, this guy, this guy, I give people here, like, whatever, let's, let's, after Mr. Becker gets in queue, let's vote on this thing. We all understand what's going on, we all like our employees, we tried our hardest to give the money that we thought we could give, that the county could afford, in a way that was responsible, in a way that we thought was going to help us get to where we want to go, and obviously take care of our people. If you were in that meeting, the first thing that took place was people were wanting to start cutting cost of living, and some loudmouth guy got in queue and said, let me tell you something. Before I sell the house and cut the cable off, and I'm not real concerned about anything other than our employees. So we're going to go cut nonprofits, we're going to go cut everything other than salaries first. So we looked at salaries really, really hard. I think the department heads that came through there, from my knowledge, I've heard no feedback, would say that there's a lot of diligence put into this. If you want to vote for another hundred ninety thousand dollars, vote for another hundred ninety thousand dollars, I'm sure we'll figure out a way to pay for it. It's comical to me that we sit here and we waste an hour on spend. But if somebody wants to wear the white hat and say they voted for pay raises, then let's vote for it.
Thank you, Mr. Palmeroy, Mr. Becker.
Yeah, I just wanted, Mr. Long, to, I just wanted to double check your figures, just to make sure. I mean, I know, I know with the sheriffs, the jailers' increase of the two fifty, it was sort of, was it inclusive of the one point five? So if we move that to two, is your calculation, is everything, you feel comfortable with the one ninety?
It will be less than the one ninety because it plays with the jailers' raises and the amount I'm getting there has benefits on all the full-time, because we don't actually have the time to change the sheet tonight. If I gave you a best guess, it would probably be closer to around a hundred and fifty thousand, but to make you safe, a hundred and ninety. So if you approved it from one point five to two percent, allowed me to move up to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, you're going to be more than safe. Because we're probably looking closer to the hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollar range, because it plays with those other raises.
Mr. Long, Mr. Becker.
Yeah, I just, I just, I don't like the process of crunching numbers on the, on the, on the floor and then putting it up to vote. You know, right now, I've heard three different figures now, one thirty, then one ninety, now one fifty. So I just don't feel comfortable in doing that.
All right, let me, before we vote on this, let me clarify one more thing, because our original motion second was on that a hundred and thirty thousand dollar amount. Just so we don't have any room on the, Mr. Hyde and Mr. Taylor, without objection, can we raise that to the one ninety-two that he says would be certain?
I'll do better than that, whatever they encourage.
Okay, okay, so Ms. Taylor, that's okay with you?
Okay, thank you.
No more, no more, no more people in the queue, so we will vote.
The amendment is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered, anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote? Receiving seven affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry.
We're back on, on budget A. Commissioner Chris Taylor is in the queue.
I'll make it really quick, just so we can understand some things. We've tried this year in the budget process around February for Mr. Long to take his projections for revenue for the coming up year, and then calculate what each individual department's budget would be based on last year's request and any increase due to growth in the county. When I say growth in the county, I mean growth of the county general fund. That was sent out to them. The intention was to start them along the idea of they get a lump sum, how they decide to do it is their choice, because they're the elected official, they're the department head. Along those same lines, what we're going to be doing this next year is again, depend upon how the county does. If it grows, we have an increase in revenues, that will be factored in, each department will be sent that number. And it'll be said, here's what your number is, they can work with that if they need to. They were all told if they want to increase pay, to keep it as neutral as they could. The ones that were in such a drastic measure, in this case, this year was EMS and the jailers, we try to address as a whole. What we've looked at is we've said, each year we realize that there's going to be some, that there's a large disparity as years go by, and they don't get a suitable increase compared to surrounding counties. When those come up, we'll address them each year as we can. But the main thing was for the department heads to be given the leeway for how they want to do the pay. And based upon the increase that the county has. In the same sense, we said nonprofits were being put on notice this year, that they were going to have a zero final. In the sense that next year, along those same lines, whatever Mr. Long says those numbers should be, we'll base that on how much we're going to give to the nonprofits as a whole. Then the nonprofits will be expected to do very detailed applications stating their previous revenue, what they're going to do with the money, and how it's going to be spent, and why they need it, a true justification compared to what we've done before in the past. And then based on that, they'll be divvied out the money, not because everybody gets thirteen thousand, or we've always done it this way, but based on need compared to the revenues we have available. That being said, if it's a really linear, there may not be any money for nonprofits. That, that's a luxury, and the county's going to view that as a luxury. If we have additional money, we'll give it to the nonprofits. So just so everybody kind of understands, when we start talking about allocating money for volunteer fire departments or anybody else, they'll have the opportunity to make the justification for what they need next year. It just depends on how much the county has to give and what we do for that. That's all, so just so everybody kind of understands where we're going as we grow, and hopefully can do a little better job of how the department heads manage it.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, and Commissioner Vaughn, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, real quick, real two quick questions. One, there was considerate turnbacks, in other words, money's going to be turned back from the different quarters. The other thing is how we're going to, next year, make up for the, I think it's nine point something million dollars that's going to be, I think it's from the state. I think they have a surplus this year, and we're going to split more budget, we'll take into consideration how we're going to fund that next year.
So your first question was about rollbacks from end of year.
Do we take that into consideration, typically a lot of times we'll, we'll look at how.
We did so, that was a, Wagner, that, that was pretty nervous about that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we looked at the last several years' budget, and historically it's been around three million dollars, and that's what we figured on for this year.
Without objection, I'll go to Dr. Phillips on the school budget question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, when the BEP formula is funded each year, then those dollars will flow the following year. So you don't have a negative impact regarding the funding that comes to you. So when you see a number print, then that number's not going to go backward against it the following year. Now, you could, you could not get, you could not get an increase, so you could hold, hold pretty much steady, but.
Does, does that answer your question?
I don't think so, I think there was a, I thought I saw something about a surplus coming from the state.
No, sir, they, they.
Also the one-time funding or something.
No, sir, I don't read that, but did you read it in a paper?
I got this from, I think it was from, the budget was nine point something million dollars from the state, and it's like, I think, thirty point three.
Yeah, that's not, that's not one-time money, that is in the BEP formula. If you go back to the governor's address, when he does the state of the state every year, he will allocate what he's going to put into K-12 and higher ed and other things. So if you'll go back and reread that, maybe watch it, it's pretty specific in there. But once they add that to the BEP formula, then it's not one-time money.
Thanks. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
So we're getting ready to vote on this budget, which includes county general, schools, everything I'm going to get. I, I won't be able to support it, because I tried to do what I felt I needed to do, the way I tried to do it. Because I think that there's some items in this budget, and I'm not going to go into it, I'm not trying to interrupt everybody here long or anything, but I think there's items in this budget will land us on the audit committee somewhere in the findings. And, uh, so I can't, can't support it.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Chris Palmeroy, you're last in the queue.
I'd just like to find out which way everybody's voting, common question.
We'll do so shortly, Mr. Palmeroy.
The budget resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty votes are entered, twenty-two votes are entered, does anyone wish to change your vote? With eighteen affirmative votes, the budget is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Before we go to sixteen oh six dash oh six, Mr. Foster, I just wanted to, just to clarify, you will notice that we will have to do this again in July as well, because the state statutes, statutes are contradictory, we do this every year. We have to do it in June and July because of the, the state statutes, and our act is doing the same two different things. It's worded funny, so to cover our bases, we'll do it in June and also July.
Well, many years in the past, we have not been able to tax, tax rate in June. We've not come to that point. We are to that point now, and we can go ahead and go and go taxing, but we'll all have to do it again in July.
So I'm just voting, Mr. Taylor, it's because we're doing it in June, not to, in July, just to clarify that.
It's not, it's not true reading, though, it's not that.
Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution sixteen oh six dash oh six is fixing the tax levy for some kind of state to see for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand sixteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand seventeen. If you recall, the tax rate pennies are exactly the same as they were last year, two dollars and fifty cents in total. The allocations are the same. I'm proud to say that we did the budget process, we came to a sustainable budget without a property tax increase. So I would move that we approve sixteen oh six dash oh six.
Motion made by Mr. Foster, submitted by Mr. Palmeroy. Commissioner, Commissioner Taylor, Mo Taylor, you're in the queue.
Well, I'll propose my motion that I tried to oppose at the beginning of the meeting, not at the beginning, but to move things forward, to change the tax levy. Two cents, debt service and two cents from schools, and I know that that may be pointless at this point, but with that, the passage of that motion would allow us to rescind some of the other things that we've done prior on the first two increased funding sources, and I still would.
Okay, and what is your, what is your specific, what pennies do you want to move, Mr. Taylor?
Two pennies from debt service.
Okay, two pennies from debt service.
And two pennies from schools.
And two pennies from schools, okay.
To the county general.
To the county general, okay, so the proposed amendment is that we move two pennies from debt services and two pennies from schools to, I'll, I'll give, give me just a second, Mr. Palmeroy. To county general, motion been made by Mr. Taylor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Palmeroy, you're first in the queue.
We, we just voted for the budget, correct?
Yes.
So he's, is he making amendment to the tax rate to lower it, four pennies, is that what he's trying to say?
No, no, he's shifting, shifting four pennies, two pennies from debt services and two pennies from school to county general.
Okay, we've talked about this several times tonight, it's, okay, okay, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Palmeroy, Mr. Goode.
I, yeah, I was going to say, point of order, really, Mr. Palmeroy, maybe the law director or finance director can speak to this, but why are we going backwards now to vote on both the tax levy and the budget? I mean, you talk the time and run that up.
You can do it in whatever order you want, if you do this, you just may have to be budget adjustments now.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Goode, is that all you have? Okay. All right, we can vote on the amendment. The amendment, let me, let me clarify here, the amendment is to move four total pennies, two from debt services, two from schools, to county general. So a yes vote on the amendment is to move those pennies, and no vote is to vote against moving those pennies.
The amendment to the tax rate resolution is on the board, each commissioner, please, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, does anyone wish to change their vote? With four affirmative votes, the amendment fails to carry, we're back on the main motion.
See no one in the queue, so we'll vote on the main, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Kemp. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kemp, we will now vote on fixing the tax levy at two dollars and fifty cents with the same penny allotment as last year.
Tax rate resolution is down on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, is there, is there anyone that wishes to change their vote? Receiving nineteen affirmative votes, the resolution is approved.
Okay, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, resolution sixteen oh six dash oh seven is to appropriate nonprofit charitable organizations for the, for the, back to the resolution. I will just allude to briefly, this is one of the areas that the budget may struggle with, because there are many needs and very worthwhile organizations that serve our county. Among them, the volunteer fire departments. At the last moment, the volunteer fire department, White House Number Two, came and asked for funding for additional fire stations, and instead of increasing the budget, fourteen thousand dollars, we increased it to one thousand, and took one thousand away from the other twelve existing fire stations. There was an increase of thirty thousand dollars from Sumter County Turo that we voted on, because they are hosting a major fishing tournament this year, which will bring substantial revenues and exposure to our county. We have in there fifty thousand dollars for the Portland Airport for economic development, but that is contingent on grants being applied for M B C. And a little bit of money may increase in Sumter County CASA, which is court-appointed special advocates that advocate for children in the court system. So an increase of eighty-three thousand five hundred in the tow nonprofit area, and I so moved to approve.
Questions been made, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Commissioner Vaughn, you were first in the queue, Mr. Posposil and Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my motion, on my bill, the, the increase, the, um, budget back up where they were at, pointing to thousand dollars for a fire hall, if I can get a second on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we, for many years, I have always had a sort of bad feeling about seeing the fire halls being stuck in the sheriff's donations category. We're talking about essential service. For a person who lives out in county, I can personally tell you that, from my family's perspective, we've had several different calls at our house for people who have. perspective, we've had several different calls at our house for people who have had a medical issue, not at my house personally, but at my head office house. Uh, the first people on that scene is volunteer fire department. I mean, I love our, our ambulance service, they've done outstanding job. The fact of the matter is, though, having a volunteer ambulance or volunteer fire department is a lot closer. These people protect our lives, they protect our homes, they protect our assets, and if we could just, if you could see it in your heart, I mean, we've got a des, undesignated fund balance that went up this year. And I don't see any reason why we can't lose some, I mean, we're talking about thirteen thousand dollars is all we're talking about, to get these people back up to at least where they were at the beginning. I'm not asking to give anymore. When I had my way, uh, we, we would, we would give them a lot more money. Um, we're not, they're not asking for any more money. All they're asking for is to be kept where they're at. So that's my move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Uh, and let me just clarify, we have a motion by Mr. Vaughn, second by, uh, Commissioner Posposil to raise the volunteer fire departments, each of the ones that are on the list, from thirteen thousand to fourteen thousand. Uh, next up, so we are now voting on, we're now discussing this amendment to the, uh, non, the non, or the nonprofit charitable organization resolution. Uh, so if you want to speak on this, uh, get in the queue. If not, you can withdraw from the queue and be able to speak, uh, to the full, um, resolution in just a moment. Uh, Mr. Posposil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Vaughn, and I hope my esteemed colleague, Chris Taylor, misspoke when he said that, uh, that the people or, or organizations on the charitable organ, organization list was a, uh, you know, luxury. Um, these guys are a necessity. Without them, we wouldn't have any protection, fire protection out in the county. And, uh, every time we put up another, uh, uh, fire hall, we're affecting somebody's, uh, insurance rates. So, for those of you who live in the city and don't have to deal with this, I hope you'll search your hearts and do the right thing for the rest of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posposil. Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir. Uh, of course, I'm in a situation where I absolutely support the fire department. Been in the fire service for over thirty years and knowing what these guys do, I'd like to offer the amendment to the amendment, if I can through. Uh, I'd like to remove thirteen thousand dollars from, uh, Forward Sumner and divide that equally among, uh, among all the volunteer fire departments.
Okay. So we got a motion to remove the, the dollar-
Thirteen thousand from Forward Sumner and divide it up equally amongst all the fire departments.
Okay, so, um, all right, hang on one second. So our amendment to the amendment is to take thirteen thousand dollars from Forward Sumner and distribute that among the, uh, different fire stations for the volunteer fire departments. Uh, motion made by Mr. Harris, sent in by Mr. Hinton. Uh, Mr. Palmer, you're next in the queue. On the, on the amendment to the amendment.
On the amendment to the amendment, which is still about volunteer fire departments, which is still, still what, there's been a lot of talk about. Uh, and so we've got to talk about volunteer, because there is some confusion. Uh, one, I agree with my fellow commissioner. Uh, I think I agree with everybody. Uh, I said the fact that volunteer firefighters are heroes. However, I do disagree with Mr. Posposil on one thing. Uh, the way we're set up, he said they're a necessity. I agree with that. And if they're a necessity, this goes back to what I started saying. Bring up the people in the city, the people in the city pay taxes to provide the service. This whole deal started with one question that I asked in budget. You mean to tell me you're gonna offer service to nine hundred more people? That's fifteen dollars and fifty cents per, per, per property address to get you what you're requesting? That's an issue that people that live in this county and every chief to a man said we cannot get them to give us that money. So the way we are set up is not fair to them, but it sure is heck for the people in the county to go over one side and say, we don't want any more taxes, but we want all of this, and we want all of that, and we, that's where this gets to. I mean, we quoted the paper, I'll tell you this, we're in the fire business, we're just in Portland. And it's gonna take one lawsuit, one time, if anybody in here is naive enough to think that the difference between thirteen thousand and fourteen thousand dollars, proper funds of volunteer fire departments, that is not what I guarantee you, that is not what a judge is gonna say when they say, oh, no, you've got thirty years of history saying you're in the fire department business. You just did it bad, and a nineteen seventy-seven tanker truck wasn't sufficient to save that little girl's life. Hey, that's under county. So, I'm for this. I'm, I'm for us getting in the fire business, but we gotta put all this bickering back and forth about two pennies and three pennies, and what we can do, and what the school director did, when, your words, not mine, this is life or death services that we don't mess around with. I was misquoting the paper on that. I'm saying we should get into business. I don't know how we do it. I would like to ask the law director if we can get a referendum for the next coming election to put it up to the people of this county to vote on, if they want to be a fire tax, or, uh, I believe some of my fellow commissioners here at one point had an account open for the schools, because they said people were crying about the schools not being funded, they could volunteer deposit money into that account. I think that can happen with volunteer fire departments. This is a serious issue, and I'm in agreement with you guys, and I've talked to a couple of chiefs, but a thousand bucks? Come on. That ain't setting nobody's life. Let's just give you a few more bottles of water. If we're gonna get in the fire business, let's get in the fire business. I, we'll vote for Mr. Harris' motion, because it's more important that we do that and Forward Sumner, but we're still doing a poor job, so don't act like this thousand dollars is your white hat, and I'm all for the fire departments. No, you're not.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Commissioner Bill Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Posposil, too, about this, and I think we need to fund, fund the, uh, parks, uh, fully, if not more. And if we get on the budget system next year, we should start playing a little bit better ahead of time if we do that. Uh, I'm sure whether she can help from county general or from, uh, uh, what do you say? Forward Sumner. Uh, I'd like to have more, more options, options of Forward Sumner.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, clarification and, uh, question and follow-up type, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to clarify, this money issue, and, uh, whether we're in this liability issue or not. Everybody's been around here for, for five years. We, we are at the cusp. It's, it has nothing to do with who they need and who they deserve. We're at the cusp of being in a scenario of the state, I'm gonna go back to an option, uh, with a referendum option, uh, in a minute, that we've done research on, and maybe to the law director, if you can remind him of the reason that we're so, with, uh, with Mr. Vaughn's figures, to the penny, Mr. Becker's smart, um, amendment to break out the four thousand east thirteen, and why we came up with that nine.
There's an ongoing debate with the state that the law does not allow city, real property tax dollars to be spent on things that happen outside the county, outside of the county, not in the cities. Schools, the sheriff's office, the ambulance service, the road department, all those things, you can see how, even if you pay the taxes in the city, you have a use out of the county. The law that was determined about twenty years ago was that fire protection and trash collection could not be pulled under those categories. What amount is too much? We don't know. There's just kind of a guesstimation, and a half of what a penny raises is sort of where some people talk. We are, really, our only options are the fire tax, and to speak to the referendum idea. When you put something on for a referendum, the referendum has to be exactly what you're voting for. So if you were to do a fire tax district referendum, you've got to have figured out ahead of time what those districts are gonna be. Are you gonna have one, are you gonna have two? There's a lot of pieces that have to be put together. You can't just say, oh, we're gonna have a referendum in November. There'd have to be study done, there'd have to be a lot of info into that. The other option is to look at other funding sources that our county has not necessarily had the ability to have. An example is hotel motel tax. Ours is designated for tourism and, and those type industry events. In some counties where there's a lot of hotels and motels, they may be able to use some of that tax to go into fire, but that's kind of one of those things that you're gonna have to study for a while. We can't decide it on the floor tonight.
Mr. Chairman, tactician?
Yes.
Um, to that point, uh, and, and this may, after a lot of relief, it may not be up tonight, but I, I would just say something about the funding source, but, um, you have seventy-five days, and we'd all like to say this, let the public speak, and it's the best thing to do, is speaking on a referendum. Mr. Curtis coincidentally was here tonight, um, who said that he would research this by tomorrow morning and find out what our timetable would be, to figure out what those figures would be, where we could deal with this in the July meeting as it relates to a referendum, because all these counties that we've been compared to, either used to have a fire tax or had one, or as the law director pointed out, have a different, a funding source. Uh, so I'm all for doing it, if there's a chance that we let the voter decide, also the best we can, and we put this on a November referendum, we got the seventy-five day notice, that's a really good chance. Last of this, Chairman, uh, if the law director and the finance director would say that they didn't think that the extra thousand dollars, um, would not per fire hall, we're still safe as of tonight, I too would be for it. I don't like the idea, I, I wish we could make an amendment to the amendment, and say, and then, and then consider a different funding source, because we're talking fourteen thousand dollars, taking it away at this juncture in our lifetime, away from our only ECB arm, if you will, uh, I'm not sure if that makes a lot of sense either, so, uh, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Uh, this is our queue. We're gonna go to Mr. Holt, so we're gonna, Mr. Becker, Commissioner Chris Taylor, Commissioner Hinton, and Commissioner Kemp. So, Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the, on the amendment to the amendment, I'm sorry.
That's correct. I want to speak to the amendment of the amendment. Um, our budget combined with the school system is about three hundred fifty-eight dollars. We're, we're talking about twelve thousand dollars. Well, I think you had thirteen stations now, is that correct? Thirteen thousand dollars. I agree with Mr. Goode. I don't see the sense of taking it out of economic development. Listen, people are moving to middle Tennessee in incredible numbers. We need all of the economic development initiatives that we can possibly get. We need to attract more businesses, more industry, because people are coming here. Those commercial entities, whether they're retail, or they're paying commercial property, they pay business license, they also pay personal property, and they create wealth and jobs. It doesn't make sense to spend less on economic development, because you're talking about a total budget of a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if you're gonna fund this, and I agree, I live out in the county, I don't live in the city, I rely on cotton, my chief's sitting right here tonight, for fire service. I'm not for cutting the budget, never was for cutting the budget. We need to adequately fund our firefighters. That's what we rely on. The cities have strengths, the county has strengths. We've always worked together, and I anticipate we will continue to work together, because we're all one people. It's not city versus county, and they deserve the funding that they've received. I ask that you take it out of county general. You're talking about thirteen thousand dollars out of a three hundred and fifty million dollar budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Mr. Becker.
Yes. Want to comment? I, I agree, I, I want us to look at, um, what would be necessary to, to implement the fire districts, or whatever, whatever you refer to. And then, uh, just to comment about the fire departments, um, you know, at, at a minimum, what's transpired, uh, over the past month, or whatever, few weeks, here tonight, I mean, I, I think, I think people have gotten to a point where they just expected that we were just gonna give them the fourteen thousand dollars every year. In fact, I think we had one fire department didn't even show up, uh, to the budget here, and so, uh, the sessions I sat with, uh, my lecture, that was only, um, only, instantly only party that, 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 for whatever reason, didn't even show up. So, um, so I think, I think the dialogue's been good. Um, I, I, I too think that, um, we can pull the thirteen thousand dollars out of county general or whatnot, but, um, anyway, just want to make that comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Becker. Commissioner Chris Taylor. Mr. Hinton, you're on then.
I think we've kind of scratched the surface on something that's very important. We've discussed for the two years I've been on budget, uh, fire service for, outside the county, every time, and how important it is, we've talked with Ms. Denham about the legality of what we can and can't do. I would just ask that rather than do a Band-Aid what we're doing tonight, if you want to pull thirteen thousand out, that's, you know, then do that, but please, instead, refer this to emergency services committee, so that it can be evaluated in a proper manner, they can look at it, we've got a county-wide dispatch system that's coming up within the year, that can be tied in, and then those same services, someone provided through, I'm not saying county-wide fire department, everybody can call them now, but you could have a county-wide service for fire based on dispatch. You could tie it in and maybe look at some legality of tying some of the money that we use for counting to those services. But again, that's something that has to be done in emergency services, it's not something you do here on the floor, and that's been our problem for two years now. Sometimes we try and fix stuff here, instead of at the, at the committee level. I'm just asking you to please refer this to emergency services, let them look at it, and then in turn pass it on to budget to see what it's gonna cost to do.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, Mr. Hinton.
If they'll keep doing what they've been doing, for this little bit amount of money, wherever it comes from, you better give it to them and let them go happy. We're talking about another department. We're, we're not talking about whether or not we're gonna have firefighting on with county. You're talking about, you're talking about all volunteers. We don't govern those people. We give them a little money, they go away and fight fires. What a deal. If, if they'll continue to do that, you better, we better try to keep them happy, because when we embrace that we're gonna have a county fire department, the budget's gonna grow pretty quick. So, I would say let's give them the money from Forward Sumner, let's approve this, and let's approve the, uh, after the amendment, and, and, and give them some money and let them go happily on their way until next year.
Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Uh, Ms. Kim.
Yes, I have just two points of clarification for the, um, county law director. On a, on a referendum, uh, that's only of the county residents that would be serviced, correct?
That's, that's why we suggest doing it, yes.
And if that were to pass, that referendum were to pass, would then all these county, uh, volunteer fire departments become under the direction and domain of the county?
That's one of the issues that would have to be addressed, is how you would organize all the different departments.
And with that come salaries and benefits and equipment and R and M and all that stuff that goes along with it, correct?
We don't know. We've got more of those issues to be addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that, uh, I think we worked on maybe like five years ago, you know, the volunteer fire departments has been an ongoing thing, when we had about thirteen, fourteen, but anyway, probably if this was all reworked like it should be, we might not have it set. I don't know, might have three or four, but I do know some of the fire stations do a very good job, and in my opinion, some of them don't do a very good job. We've got a couple of guys that run up and down the road in front of my house with their lights and sirens, that, um, there's no calls. I've checked the calls, and, um, but I do agree, it's a, it's a cheap fix, but it's just something that somewhere down the line, it should probably be working, and, uh, not just thinking that we're gonna have fourteen stations, because when we redo it, it needs redoing right, and, uh, as Mr. Hinton said, if we, we're talking a whole different department.
Thank you, Mr. Committee. Uh, Mr. Goode, ring.
Thank you. Um, I'm in favor of, of providing more funds for the fire departments. However, I'm not sure that the, uh, this amendment to the amendment is, uh, the best way to go. I'd rather, I'm gonna vote down getting, taking the money from, um, Forward Sumner, I'm, and, because I'd like to hear where Mr. Vaughn proposes taking money from, for the, uh, for this.
Undesignated fund balance. Undesignated fund balance. And I think that's a more appropriate place for it to come from. All right. Mr. Decker.
Chairman, I just want to make sure that we all understand, as we go through this vote, if we vote the first time, we're gonna take the money out of the Forward Sumner. But if that does not pass, and we come back, we will have a second vote. And the second vote will come out of, I guess, county general, undesignated fund balance. Is that, I want to make sure that we understand that.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Goode.
Mr. Chairman. I want to make amendment to amendment to amendment.
Kim.
What? Listen, I think it's going past unanimous, we just take it out of Mr. Vaughn's recommendation and not Forward, not our E C B.
Let's just, we'll go ahead and vote on the amendment to the amendment. Okay. Hang on, Mr. Harris.
I was just about to believe by amendment to amendment.
So, now we're gonna make amendment to amendment to amendment. I was gonna say, Mr. Hinton, if you got amendment to amendment to amendment to amendment, we can't do it tonight.
We got it.
Mr. Hinton is agreeing. You're agreeing, I'm sure. Yes. So, now we're on the amendment, which is to take $13,000 from the undesignated fund balance. There's no one in the queue. Let's vote on this amendment.
It's going to be $14,000.
$13,000.
You're giving everybody $14,000, each group.
Yes. Amendment each group, $14,000. A thousand dollars more to each of the fire departments.
There's $14,000.
Right. It's, it's $14,000 to each of the volunteer fire departments instead of $13,000.
There's $14,000.
There are 14. Point out, it's two. Okay.
13.
13, okay. Who's on first?
There's only 13.
All right. Let's vote.
The amendment is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving 22 affirmative votes, the amendment is approved. We're back on the nonprofit resolution as amended.
There's no one in the queue, so we can vote. 16-06-07.
All right. The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-one votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? The resolution is unanimously approved.
16-06-08 is no longer needed, so Mr. Pospesil, motion to adjourn.